Community, thank you for being with us here this evening and continue to be with us council as they move forward on issues that need their consideration. We thank you for being with us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, now we come to the point in the agenda when the public can speak on any items not agendized. Is there anyone willing to come forward with an item? Come on forward, Senator Dutton.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I hope this would be the appropriate time for me to pay tribute to Councilmember Brower and his distinguished service here to the city of Loma Linda. I understand he's been here for two decades. Is that right, 20 years? And, you know, you just, you have a lot to do with the fine traditions here in this city. And I have a certificate of recognition that I'd like to present to you that makes reference to some of the fine work you've done here in the city of Loma Linda. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the people that you've represented because you truly have made it a little bit nicer place to live and raise our families here in Loma Linda. And I want to thank you for all your dedication and service. So with your permission, I'll look here.
Come forward.
It's a real honor to have Senator Dutton here and present this tonight. He's a busy man in Sacramento, and thank goodness we have him there.
Thanks for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to item number one, seating of council members elect. We have council bill R-2012-34 commending Stan Brower. We have a resolution and the council bill. And the resolution states it's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda commending Councilman Stan Brower for his devotion to civic duty and outstanding service to the city. And it has the usual wheretwas and wherefore's. And you've served 20 years on the council, two as mayor, five as mayor pro tem, and agency vice chair for three years. Served on a lot of committees. And you have a genuinely passionate feeling about signs and open space and in preservation of the South Hills. We thank you for that. You served in a fair, honest, and open manner. There's no doubt about that. And we resolve that we applaud, honor, and recognize you for your outstanding and dedicated service. And we thank you very much. I will present the commendation, then we'll deal with the council bill. Stan has modestly declared a conflict of interest on his own commendation. So what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll go ahead and move council bill R-2012-34 commending Stan Brower.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any misguided opposition?
One abstention.
Okay, one abstention. Okay, it passes. Congratulations, Stan. Now, the Chamber of Commerce would like to do a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Stan, we would like to thank you on behalf of Loma Linda City or the Chamber of Commerce for your years of dedication, not only to our city, but to our chamber. And on behalf of us, we would like to present you this plaque that says that. Thank you for your years of dedication.
That's an impressive-looking plaque, or trophy, or something there.
The honors keep coming. Now the city has a presentation. Who's doing the honors here? Uh-huh. There's a present. Yeah, all of you council watchers, that's as close as we get to a Medal of Honor.
It will be well-used.
Okay, next, remarks from the blushing councilmen.
I'm not one, fortunately for all of you, that likes to make long speeches, but just a few comments that I can't help but make on this occasion. It's been a great privilege to serve the citizens of this community for these years. You think about the trust that the individual citizens place in any of us that they elect to this office. And you know there are a number of things they hopefully agree with you, but you know there's always other things. They say, why in the world do you make those decisions? But they still have enough faith and trust to continue to support us and, despite some of those misgivings from time to time, and work together to help show us at times the error in our thinking. But it is really an honor in a community like this to have served for those years. And I again thank all the electors for that trust and their willingness to let me participate and represent them. Just a few quick words on other issues. There are so many people to thank that it's always impossible to include them all, but foremost on the list, thank my family for putting up with being gone and all the activities that go along. So appreciate that more than we can say. The support of friends that are always important, especially at times when, you know, election campaigns can get heated up and so forth. It's always good to know you have that support. And then there are so many that have been friends and supporters that I won't name individually, but see many of you in the audience. And thank you so much for that. I'd also like to thank the city staff. You know, we as city council get up here and, you know, put on the show in song and dance. And yeah, we make some decisions and give direction, but the day-to-day work doesn't get done because of us. It's totally due to staff. We don't get out there and do the hard work to implement the decisions, to protect the citizens from crime, to respond to fire and safety concerns, to keep the city looking good and keep the infrastructure working. So even though government has challenges on all levels, especially in this economic environment, I truly believe we have one of, if not the hardest-working and best-working staff and leadership of any city or government agency that I have seen. And I'm very proud of our city, city staff, and city workers. Also proud just to live and work in this community. You know, you hear other communities bragging about, you know, their great heritage as far as architecture, or, you know, certain cultural treasures. And that's all great and good. But, you know, Loma Linda is a city is rich in ways that no other city can duplicate. We are rich in being a city that really values, values especially related to church and God. I can't think of another community that has the number of churches and church members that this community has. You always think of, of course, the, some of the Adventist communities since it's probably got the largest churches. But we also have very active longstanding traditions with St. Joseph the Worker Catholic Church. We have now Islamic Center on Redlands Boulevard and one of the largest churches in the Inland Empire I think we can proudly recognize as having started here in Loma Linda, the Rock Christian Church that's moved to our border now. But I think it illustrates the kind of community we are to have that to be a great value. Education goes without saying from our excellent elementary schools such as Brenmar and the academy, and then the institutions of higher learning. This community values education, I think, higher than most any other community in Southern California. We also obviously value health care with probably the highest per cap in a number of hospital beds and patient visits of any community this size that I can think of. Either it makes us the healthiest city or the sickest city, I don't know what, but it does show the value we place on health care. And that health care and service, not only for just our immediate citizens of our town, of our community, of Southern California, but literally that influence that goes around the world that this community gives out. And by providing the essential services, the essential environment, I think the city is able to foster those values that make us a community and a city that all of us are proud of. And it's just been a great privilege to serve and want to thank everyone again for that.
Well, I'd like to say that Stan has been an excellent role model for this city council, excellent role model to me. He was a council to me when I first contemplated running. And I've never met anybody who was more steadfast in his beliefs and stood for things more firmly than Stan. He's, like we said in the commendation, he's got a problem with signs, and he was very consistent with that, you know. He doesn't like the blight of commercialism all over the place. But Stan, you'll be greatly missed. Enjoyed working with you for the last six years. I'll miss you a lot, but I'll see you at work.
I concur with many of Mayor Rigsby's words. I really am going to miss you. Many people may not realize that even though you have left, you've not only given Loma Linda an excellent reputation of being one of the most thoughtful and fair-minded council members we've had in many years. I remember prior to being on the council, you're one of the few that actually listened to us when we came to you and expressed our viewpoints about certain issues. And a lot of people may not realize that you were the crucial third vote back, and I believe, well, I guess it would have been about three years ago, 2009, when we redid the general plan. And we as council members, unlike congressmen or state senators, actually have a lot more power over the daily lives of the citizens than most people realize. And the decisions we make does actually physically impact people. And you were that crucial third vote that ensured that Loma Linda, as we move forward for the next 20 years, remains the nice city that it is. So we thank you for that. A lot of people may only see this side of him, which is the very professional and stoic side, but some of us get to see him in the back room. And he's actually a very funny guy and quite talkative. And it was always a pleasure to have him in the back. We're really going to miss you. And we try to keep him here, but he chose to move on to greener pastures. So, but we should lots of luck and many happy cruises.
Well, I also want to reiterate some of what's already been said. Stan, you've, before I ran for city council, from time to time, I would tune in on television and watch. And I was always impressed with your commitment to be an independent thinker, your articulate of the ideas and principles that you believe in. And I always had a lot of respect for that. A couple of years ago, when the notion to run for city council occurred to me, and a few people encouraged me, I recall that I made a telephone call to you one evening. And the truth is, I was fishing for an endorsement. And Stan listened to me and reflected on the questions I posed. And finally, I was kind of trying to lead up to this request. And he said, "Well, Ron, I think you should run. I think you should run." That's as close as I could get to an endorsement. And fortunately, I did. And I've appreciated your independent thinking, the articulate and right-on questions that you tend to ask that penetrate to the core of an issue. And I can tell you that there have been times where I've thought, now, wait a minute, that's what I meant to ask. And so it's a sign of a veteran politician who's committed to his principles. And I've enjoyed working with you for two years. I expected it would be a lot longer. But I wish you the best in a fully private life. And keep in touch with city politics. And don't be surprised if I turn to you for little guidance from time to time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
It's tough to go last when everybody takes everything you wanted to say. But no, I have to say that, and I was telling somebody earlier, that Stan is always so dedicated to the city. And although very open-minded, he does ask the right questions. He thinks things through. He's very methodical. And he just truly, truly cares so much about the city. And I appreciate that. And I look up to you. You've been here a long time. And it is sad to see you go. You are the anchor that is this council. So, thanks, and we appreciate it.
Well, thanks for all the kind words. Boy, should have retired sooner. These political obituaries are great.
There was a coin about 12 years ago that made sure that didn't happen.
Yes, that's part of the record.
This is the point in the schedule where we usually accept the results of the election, but that's already been done. So we will proceed. presentation of certificates of election to the three city councilmen-elect. And I'll hand it over to the clerk.
If I could ask you, Councilman Popescu and Rigsby to join me at the podium. And I would also ask Councilman-elect Leonard to join as well. I'm getting over laryngitis, so I will use the mic. If you please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
We do.
And I would ask that you please sign your oaths, and then I will give you your certificates. And the certificate of election reads that I, Pamela Burns O'Cam, City Clerk of the City of Loma Linda, State of California, do hereby certify that a general municipal election was to have been held in the city on the fifth day of June 2012, and at a regular meeting of the city council held on the 22nd day of March 2012, John Leonard, Ovi Popescu, and Rhodes Rigsby, were officially declared elected to the office of member of the city council, as shown by the minutes of the city council now of record in my office. And I have signed and sealed it this day.
the mayor's position because you're always looking one way and then can't tell what's happening over there. So, now we have a reorganization vote. Election of the mayor. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam clerk, I would thereby nominate Mayor Rigsby for a second and hopefully four-year term. But I think by law, we have to keep it down to two as mayor. He's been wonderful, and I would love to nominate him as mayor.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Then the motion would be in order to close nominations and to instruct me to cast unanimous ballot for Rhodes Rigsby as mayor.
I move that we close nominations.
And I'll second that.
And those in favor, say aye.
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 And unanimous ballot has been cast for Rhodes Rigsby as mayor. Mayor Rigsby, and you will conduct the election for the mayor pro tem.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council on mayor pro tem?
I would like to move that Ovi Popescu continue in that position.
I second that.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Then would someone like to move that we close the nominations?
I'll move that we close the nominations.
Okay, and is that motion also to elect him unanimously?
I'll amend my motion and motion to elect him unanimously.
And the second? Yes. Okay, is there any other discussion about that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, now we go to appointment of city council members to the boards and commissions. City clerk, you'll conduct this, help us with it.
I have provided you with just a brief staff report on each one of the organizations that you basically appoint yourselves to. Later on on the agenda, you will be updating a new FPPC form. There are new rules that state that councilmen cannot appoint themselves to boards or commissions for which they get compensated unless there has been the Form 806, which has been provided by the FPPC, which outlines the current positions and your current pay. I have done that, and it has been posted on the website per the statute. So you may appoint yourselves. The boards that are affected by that would be Sandbag, Omnitrans, the Inland Valley Development Agency, and also the San Bernardino International Airport Authority. The other positions are not compensated. So I have given you just a brief description of each one of the organizations and who currently holds those positions. So you're welcome to go down the list and discuss and appoint as you see fit.
Okay, currently, why don't we just go through them one at a time? And shall we have the vote at the end? And we'll just make the designations as we go? That's how we've done it in the past. Okay. I currently serve on Sandbag, and I gladly continue in that role if it's your pleasure.
I concur with that. I see that Mr. Duper is your alternate, that Mr. Duper wants to serve, or anybody else wants to vie for it. I guess that's open as well. Both positions. But I would support the mayor's continuing to be the representative on Sandbag for us, and Mr. Duper as the alternate.
Sure, I don't mind. I'll second that motion.
Okay, then I think we'll do it by designating them as we go, and then we'll vote all of them at the end. And we have Omnitrans. The current appointment is Councilman Daley, and Councilman Popescu is the alternate. I would support continuing that if that's...
I definitely support that. I know Councilman Daley feels very strongly about that organization. I know Councilman Daley feels very strongly about that organization, and I think he does a great job there.
Although, he's never missed a meeting, and I've never been able to be at any of the meetings.
They're exciting meetings, I mean, what can I say? You wouldn't want to miss one. I'd be willing to serve that capacity.
So it sounds like that's the situation. We have to probably let Councilman Leonard in on something, so we'll start thinking about that. I don't know what your time commitments are, but it's helpful to look at them. And the meeting times, are they listed?
Yes.
Yes.
So if you can look through those and see if there's anything that you could... I know you have a schedule similar to Councilman Brower's.
I work a lot harder than he does.
Wow. We're glad to hear that.
So, a lot of these things I would like to serve on, but they're during times when I can't, so the meetings are incompatible with my schedule, so that's helpful to know. One time, I was nominated and appointed to a meeting that I could never go to, so I thought that was a mistake. So I'd like to make sure everyone makes sure they can actually attend. Okay, next is IVDA. We currently have Popescu and Daley.
I'd make a motion, we continue that also the same direction.
And with you as the alternate?
If they're both okay with that.
Yes, we'll put up with you.
And then SBIA is with Ovi as the delegate, and Councilman Daley's the alternate.
I'd like to suggest that Councilman Duper be the alternate on Sebia. If, yeah, no. Yes, I am, if you're, if that's a time that can work for you.
Either that, or, either that, or we could, that might be an opportunity for Councilman Leonard, do you guys?
I'd like to do it for Councilman Daley.
I think that's...
I think we should do it.
He's attended a lot of the meetings even though he doesn't have to, and that's great. We really appreciate that, and he's become very knowledgeable, and that means that we're all going to be there, it's just we can't talk about city stuff. But I would love to have him as an alternate, or, Mr. Daley, you would have been an alternate as well, so, well, you already served with me on the IVDA.
I want to ask Councilman Leonard, do you see anything in here that you have a particular interest in, that you want to weigh in on, or?
I'm just reading through it, it's kind of seemed to be over different boards. I think Mayor's correct, my schedule is very similar to that of Brower's. So whatever would fit the best with that, any of those, it's fine.
Yeah, and I hate to say it, but the newcomers usually get their feet wet with a solid waist.
You were just joking, you're so... Did it go on?
Now, on that one, we have Councilman Duper as the delegate, and Councilman Brower was the alternate, but I think Councilman Duper would probably be willing to relinquish the primary role on that. He's no longer the newcomer. So, would you like to be the backup with your veteran status?
Yeah, I don't mind. A lot of these, a lot of these particular meetings even get canceled, so it's quarterly and it...
It's, that actually, that Municipal Water District Advisory Policy Committee was the one that I sat on, and I actually, to be honest with you, was, not only do you learn a lot about water, and water's a huge issue in our county, and everybody's excited every time, it rains a lot, but it doesn't rain all the time, and we actually have major droughts, and you learn about the situation that we're in, where water is actually more precious than gasoline for this area. But the other interesting thing about that is that a number of other council members from other cities serve, and it's an opportunity for you to network with some of those, and I think that's a good committee, and it's evening...
And it's 7:00 PM.
Yeah. So, and it meets in Redlands, which is close, so.
How's that with you, Phil? You want to be the backup?
I'm the backup.
Okay. So you get that, Pam? The Joint Powers Insurance Authority, Councilman Brower's on that. I've never been to one of those. I don't even know, how often does it meet, actually?
It's once a year, and I usually, I plan to attend the next one, which is July 18. I usually attend anyway, so I'm a backup, but you're welcome to go.
Okay.
I'd like to recommend Councilman Duper for that role.
Looks like it's...
Oh, wow. I didn't see that.
It's in, it's in a week, in La Palma. 7:00 PM on a Wednesday, so, will you carpool? Okay. We're supposed to do, have an alternate, and I think we can keep with our staff for that, the same alternate. Okay, Confire. I'm currently the chairman of the Board of Confire, so I'd like to continue with that if I could. And Councilman, well, it sounds like Councilman Duper is cleaning, clearing the board here.
I'm wondering if Councilman Duper could serve as the primary delegate on that in light of his background with law enforcement and public safety.
Since I'm currently the chairman of the Board, you think that's...
Well, you didn't tell us that.
He did, he didn't.
I guess I was tuned out.
That'd be challenging.
Yeah, so, I think we could continue in that same primary and secondary designation. And we kind of informally have served, the two of us, as the Public Safety Subcommittee of the Board, so, unless we want to change that.
That makes sense.
Okay, and then the Flood Advisory Committee, looks like I'm stuck with that by title, and Councilman Popescu is the alternate.
I get their agendas all the time, so I'm hoping that you attend meetings from time to time.
Yeah, we're actually...
I'd almost like to recommend my esteemed colleague here, because during the last floods, I know he was out filling sandbags.
He was making a move for sandbag.
Yeah, that's right.
So, are we going with your suggestion, or?
Would you like to be on that? It's the Zone 3 Flood Control Advisory Committee, they meet...
It says the mayor's automatically the delegate to the committee, and I'm entirely comfortable with that.
But you know what? That's not always the case. I was actually the main guy two years ago. I'm not sure why it says that.
Well, we're actually very well represented, because I think the chairman of the committee is a Loma Linda resident and former city councilman.
Norm is no longer on the board.
Oh, he's not?
Okay, we were well represented until he retired.
That was, just for those who might be interested, those are the people who help facilitate all the flood control channels, and obviously, we're one of the few cities that actually have a major flood control channel that goes through our city. That's true, it's completed, so. However, there is one other channel that does impact us, that we're trying to get funding for, which is the one over by Mission in order to accommodate for that intersection. So, there is some involvement on our part to try to get that done. But if Mr. Daley's willing to serve on that, that'd be great. If not, we'll just keep it the way it is.
No, 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 I'm fine with the way it is right now, unless Councilman Leonard is looking for more work.
Happy to watch you guys.
At 9:00, he's probably had some surgery to deal with.
Okay, then, we, I guess we'll have a motion to accept all of the designations that we've stated.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We'll move to item number four. Public hearing, Council Bill R-2012-35, Determining Costs Related to the Spring 2012 Weed Abatement Program, Fire Department, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, hello? I'm here this evening to ask that you receive and adopt, as stated, the Council Bill 2012-35 that deals with our weed abatement program. If I could take a few moments and just give the new council member a brief overview of what that entails. Basically, your Fire Prevention Bureau, what we strive to accomplish every year, to keep the fire hazard to a bare minimum the best we can. There are two seasons, two weed seasons. We have a spring season and a fall season. Basically, in the spring, we're dealing mostly with light weeds, accumulation of combustible material on people's properties, primarily empty properties, but some that do have homes on them. And in the fall, we deal primarily with tumbleweeds. And in this particular, what we're dealing with now is the culmination of our spring investigations and surveys throughout the city. Typically, this particular season started on April 9th of this year, and we have usually anywhere from 225 to 250 bare parcels or parcels that we look at, or that have weed problems or combustible problems on the lots. And this particular year, by April 16th, in your packet, you have an example of the weed notice that goes out to the property of record, owner of record on the property. By April 16th, they have that in their possession. On May 1st of this year, follow-up inspections were accomplished, and any properties that were not abated by that time, in this case, there were 23 parcels that a, the notice was sent to the city contractor to do the weed abatement on that particular lot. And by July 3rd of this year, the invoices were sent to the property owners of record. And this particular year, because we have only one council meeting per month, you can see on your information here, the bill has to be paid by July 10th of this year. We do, we did put into the notices to the folks that they do have until July 24th. That's the last time that we, on our timetable, that we have to get any that aren't paid to the county's assessor office, and a lien will be placed against that particular piece of property. One side note on all of this is many of these property owners, they choose to follow this method of weed abatement. It's much easier for them not to try to find their own weed abatement contractor, they just use the city's provided, and there's a fee applied for administration costs to that, and then when they get their bill from the tax assessor, they pay it at that time. So I'm asking that you adopt, or adopt and accept our schedule, or schedule information we've given at this time, and any questions you have, I can answer.
A motion is not yet in order, we have a public hearing, but are there any questions?
Out of curiosity, which is the property that's owned by Deutsche Bank, if you happen to know? It's number nine?
May take us a minute here, we've got 200 and...
That's not crucial, I'm just curious as to where that piece of property is and how large it is.
Okay, okay. This seems like a shorter list than we've seen in the past, is that true?
They usually ran around 20 to... Now, what we'll find on this list, I think in the fall of last year, we actually had 13 that went to lien with the county, and that'll probably determine, this'll come out very similar to that, it's just that this timeframe, where they got, the bills went out on July 3rd, they were, we normally give them, the residents, much longer to pay that bill than July 10th, and that's why we've added on here that we'll accept payments until July 24th. So I speculate by July 24th, we'll probably be where we were on that 13, 14, that go to the assessor's office.
Good.
That property you're questioning is located on Van Luister, a little over half a acre.
So, that's a pretty big corporation, hopefully our notice goes to the right department.
Probably a bank repossession or something?
Well, it goes to the address on file with the county.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then I will open the public hearing. Anybody want to talk about this? Nobody has a passion for weed abatement. Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
I will move Council Bill R-2012-35.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it is approved. Next, Fire Department, again, Council Bill R-2012-36, Fire Department Fees for Reviews of Plans.
This also has to do with our Fire Prevention Bureau, so Jamie, why don't you just give that presentation from the study?
If I could, again, I'm here this evening to ask that you adopt Council Bill R-2012-36 and the resolution that applies with that, but if I could, I'd like to give you a brief report, an overview of what this is, and in your packet, you have the results of the fee study that we did, but in that packet, you didn't have the information that I had to send to our contractor that did that study, so I'd like to give you this, and it'll be information for you as I go through this, and you'll be able to check with it. Okay, basically, when a new building is built, a new home is built, or if there is any change in the structure of a building, we get building plans that come in. I look at those plans as well, but there's a fee that is applied to those plans through the Building Department. In those plans of any new building or any new homes, because of whether it's code for the State of California or municipal code requirements of our own city regarding sprinklers, separate plans are submitted to the Fire Department, to the Prevention Bureau. I deal with four different areas. I have the sprinkler plans that'll come to me, I have the alarm plans for that particular structure or building, I have what we call fixed extinguishing systems, which, the best that I can explain there are the hoods that are in a restaurant. We inspect and look at the plans and inspect any of the hoods that are in restaurants, and lastly, we take care of the new solar panels. If you've driven through the city recently, you've seen an explosion in the number of solar panels that are put on, primarily in our city lately, it's been the residences. And we do look at those plans, and we do inspect those. The last time our fee study was addressed was in the end of 2003, and our current fee schedule was set up at that point. I believe that even then, we did not have a fee that covered the cost of the staff hours that put into the whole process of doing these plans, and I'll explain that in a second. But that's what we've had to live with. Currently, if you want to look on, in your packet, the fee study that we had, I worked with the contractor on, revenue and cost analysis, if you go to the first page, it deals with sprinklers. You see there, it says Fire Sprinkler Plan Check and Inspections. There's the current, you'll see there, does everybody follow this? It's a little bit confusing, but there's the current fee structure there. Currently, in both the alarms, the alarms and sprinklers, these fees are based on the actual numbers of sprinklers, heads, like the actual heads that are in a building, or if you're dealing with alarms, or we're dealing with the actual smoke detectors or pool stations or actual devices. So the number of those heads, sprinkler heads or devices that are in a building will determine the fees that they're paying. You'll see, I'd like to give you just a comparison of, at the low end, and when I say low end, say a single-family residence, if somebody was to build a new single-family residence, what they would pay in fees for, say, a sprinkler system, and at the far end, give you an idea of what our current fees are in place for doing a big structure. An example, say, in the last three or four years, we've done the Centennial Plaza, we've done a number of big structures at the Academy, we've done our apartment complexes on Poplar Street, big, big units. Let's take, for instance, first, the single-family dwelling. Currently, a single-family dwelling, they typically have in them, say, a 2,000, 2,500-square-foot home, would have anywhere from 21 to 50 heads in them for sprinklers. And for that, the fees are $175. Now, from the staff hour side of that, if that sheet I just gave you, on the very front page there, it kind of showcases the time spent in three different areas. When we get these plans, I have to plan-check them, then we have rough inspections, and then we have the final inspection and certification testing of all of these different systems. So let's take, for example, the single-family home. I take, on average, between, depending on how complicated the home is, one to three hours for plan-check. Then we have one to one and a half hours for the rough inspection, where we go through before the drywall is up in a building, before all the walls are closed in, and we have to visually check all the piping, make sure it's not leaking, make sure it's strapped so that an earthquake doesn't rip it up out of the ceiling, and we got leaks everywhere. Then, once we go back again, once the... Then we, once we go back again, once the building is finished, all the drywall is up, and you make sure that all the, you know, all the bezels are on, that there is no leaks, that everything is spaced correctly, and then we run water through it, and make sure that, okay, they hook it up to water, and it's going to work. So if you take that, I've got three, four, roughly five hours' worth of time spent in a single-family home, that currently, we are receiving for those fees, $175. That's five hours of team hours, basically, some that Jim does, some that I do, that's what we currently get. Now, with a new fee schedule, for that same single-family home, for the five hours we will invest, and these numbers were arrived by this contractor, the numbers he received for our salaries from our finance department. So now, that same single-family home, based on the five hours that we invest to do the, all three of those items, a plan-check, the rough inspection, and the final inspection, will go to $465. Now, on the far side of this, on, say, a large building, that, we're talking, say, for instance, alarms, if you, on the fee schedule, it would be on the second page, where at the top of it, it says fire alarm systems plan checklist, and on my data that I gave.
Jamie, question?
Yes, sir.
I was getting lost on the single-family homes, so if you can stick with me for a second. If I'm on the revenue and cost summary for the sprinkler fee, I'm reading 21 to 50 heads, new is 175, existing, which I assume is what we're currently charging, is 105.
I'm sorry, no, but what that means is if, if I was, if the person is building a brand-new home from the ground up, between 21 and 50 heads is $175. The person that's building an addition, say, they're going to do a remodel, put a second story on their house, it's an existing home, but they're going to do a remodel, that, or, or we have another ordinance here, that, let's say, a house was built in the 50s before our city ordinance, and it wasn't required to have sprinklers, we have an ordinance in the city that says if that house was, say, a 2,000-square-foot house, and they're going to do an addition of 1,500 square feet, once they pass a threshold of 50% of the original square footage, the ordinance reads that the entire, the new addition plus the original house has to be sprinkled. So in the house that is already there, the current fee is $105.
So in that context, new construction versus a remodeler addition, an existing structure?
What's the rationale behind that?
Because in a, and we'll touch base a little bit on that, on a brand-new structure, none of the underground is in place already, so we have to inspect more things, if you will, to verify that that system, and when I say underground, the attachment to the main out in the street, and how it gets in, and it's got a number of devices on that thing we have to look at to make sure it's to code.
And then I'm struggling a little bit, if you, that's the current fee structure, and the next set of numbers below that is revenue and cost comparison, I'm trying to understand the relationship between the two. So if we have $175, help me understand the revenue and cost comparison, where did the 150, 130, that's a revenue, that's, I'm sorry, the 579 is unit cost, but I don't see how that relates to the numbers above.
Well, what he did there is, he asked me, in a given year, how many homes would be built, and in doing so, this was complicated for me as well, I.
I'm not putting you on the spot.
No, 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 it was complicated as he was explaining it to me, but he wanted to understand, in a given year, how many homes would you do, and when you did that, he said, in a given year, you potentially would do 23 homes, when we did a lot of homes, now we're not doing a lot of homes, and I wish I had a better answer to how he came up with that, but it is a complicated, as finance people look at how they project, how they project costs over a year, it has to do with that.
But there is a linkage between the fee structure.
Well, the actual linkage, if you will, comes back to my survey data that I gave him, that shows, okay, in a given category, the single-family home, I'm spending five hours' worth of staff time, and that calculates out, how can I say it, all five hours aren't by my pay scale. Some of them are my pay scale, some of them are Jim's pay scale, some of them are together, and when they, when he calculated that out, based on the salary figures that he got from the finance department, that's how he came up to these numbers that are changed.
I should have done more homework ahead of time and contacted you before the meeting, so.
Can I ask you a question real quick, too?
Yes.
I see, it looks like you're getting away from the new sprinklers versus existing sprinklers down to a one consolidated fee schedule, because down below, it doesn't differentiate.
On the, well, on single-family homes, now, it does, if you look at, single-family homes is correct, I'm kind of, a fee for existing versus new are both staying at 465, because in reality, when they do an addition to a home, even though there may be sprinklers in there already, we'd have to check basically the same things we normally would, but you'll see that there is a category differentiation between new commercial and existing commercial.
Okay, I just got that right there.
Yeah.
The rationale behind what we're talking about, then, is that our costs are going up, and so we need to modify the fees to reflect the cost of inspecting and ensuring that we have appropriate fire protection in single-family homes in this case.
Well, the, why I asked for this survey is that I know how much time the staff is invested into doing the.
And has that changed in recent years?
No, no, and that's why I think that these figures going from our, and you'll see a drastic change when I get to the alarms example here, but the figures that this fee schedule came upon 10 years ago, I think was, didn't anywhere come close to.
I think what you see here, council member, is a philosophy or a request from the consultant to give us a fully reimbursed or a full cost for effort. Our program, sure, costs have come up some over that 10-year period, but you see a, maybe a philosophic change there, too, are we going to be 100% reimbursed for that effort, or are we going to be partially reimbursed for that effort? This study that was provided by the consultant represents full cost recovery for the time effort on each house.
And do we have benchmarking, so that I know if I'm building a house in Redlands versus Loma Linda, that the cost for fire protection, inspection, and so forth is going to be roughly equivalent, or do we have those benchmarks?
Jamie's aware of what those are. The study, of course, when the consultant asks those, he doesn't take into account, hey, what does everyone else do here? He looks at what are these cities' costs to be fully reimbursed. That being said, Jamie, I did ask him, hey, can you look into that and see where we will fall within that range?
And I'm not questioning the numbers, I just want to be sure that we're on par or better than what it's costing to have similar services in surrounding communities.
Yeah, and let me touch on that, because I looked at that, too. This survey was done, I asked him to do a survey where, like the chief said, to give us 100% recovery of the fees that, or the staff hours that were put to these projects. Then I went, and I went to four different cities. I went to Rancho, I went to Chino, Redlands, and San Bernardino County, and asked for their fee structures, asked their fire marshal, this is what I'm trying to do here, what do you guys do, can you send me a copy of what you're at? Three of the cities, Rancho, Chino, and Redlands, were all, they're all doing exactly what we're doing right now, but they sent me what their current fee schedules were. What their current fee schedules were, we were far behind what their current fee schedules were, but now with these, that would have put me more expensive than theirs, however, they are now going through the same process, so I don't know where they will land themselves. And this, this survey and presentation to you is like the chief said, I'm going to give you, I'm showing you where we are, what I feel is the low end. I went to the consultant and asked him, given on that data that I gave him, knowing what it takes me and Jim and I to do these projects, this is how much time we have invested, he took the average of those, and with the numbers that he was given by our finance department, that's, these are these new numbers you see. So you have before you that full range, and we can decide, you're either, you know, do you want to go at some percentage of that, or, but let me, if I could, give you the example of the far range, which was actually the one that, while we were out doing these projects, were the impetus behind me saying, we got to look at this. And that is, like I said, some of the larger buildings that we've done in the last few years, and we can speak sprinklers, or in fact, it's more glaring here in the alarm part of things, so if you go to the second page, where it says fire alarm systems, plan check, and then in my, second page of my data that I gave the consultant, it has fire alarm systems, and if you go to the bottom here where it says, or in the middle, large or multi-system buildings, I typically would spend, and these were, on average, between 10 and 12 hours on the plan checking of a large building. Rough inspection is anywhere from four to five hours for us to go through that building and check the wiring, check where they placed the devices, that there was in conduit where it needed to be, et cetera, et cetera. And then in the testing and the final certification of these buildings, we easily could spend up to 30 hours. So, the examples I said of Centennial Plaza, of the Academy Gymnasium, and the Student Service Center, the Poplar Street Apartments, big buildings, large number of devices that have to be checked, we spent easily 40 to 45 hours in those buildings. Currently, we receive $385. Now, this is going to look glaring, because that's been, I believe, wrongly, I don't want to say wrongly, but the decision was made 10 years to go to keep it at $385. So when I tell you now for that same building of 150 devices, we will be requiring $3,890. So it's 10 times, if you will, what has been on the books for the last 10 years. That is why I'm here explaining to you that, in reality, these are the hours we're spending, staff hours we're spending on these buildings, this is what we're receiving.
And I very much appreciate your description of the methodology, it sounds like it's credible to me. I just want to be sure that we maintain our eye on the market, so that potential developers want to build in Loma Linda and don't get scared off by our high fees. That's my, the point of my questions, thank you.
I think in relation to your earlier question, and looking at the revenue-cost comparison, I think ultimately what that's telling us is that here's what you would receive over 23 houses, that 151, here's what it really cost you, so you actually subsidized $428. And you look at the right column, there's your total revenue, your total cost, the total subsidy, and so we're looking at, instead of 100% cost recovery, a cost recovery in the neighborhood of 26% in our current fee structure, so.
I just have to make a comment, I, I'm struggling with this, because the small government conservative in me gets, is just, is a little worried about this, and not so much for the big developers and the big projects, but more or less for, you know, Joe Citizen, who wants to do an addition, or wants to build his own house on that vacant piece of land that he's been holding on to, and especially given the economic times, I mean, I understand, on one side, to be fiscally responsible, we need to recoup some of this cost that's going out in our services, but yet, I also don't want to stick it to the citizen, so to speak. It's tough, and so what you're saying is, right now, right now, we're low compared to the surrounding cities, but once we implement this, we're going to be a little higher than they are, anticipating that they're going to do the same thing.
Of three of those cities that I mentioned, yeah, three of them are in the same process of looking and re-establishing their fees.
I know you did the county, which would apply to Grand Terrace, right? And then, I kind of would have liked to have seen Colton and maybe San Bernardino, just because they're more immediate.
Each city does things, it's not a cookie cutter that they all do it the same way, so for example, when I got Rancho's study, or their fee schedule, where we, when I'm talking a sprinkler system, it encompasses the underground, what we call the riser, where water's disseminated to all different parts of the building, whether it's floors or parts of the building, the bell that rings, the, on the riser that sends the signal to the alarm company that there's a, that there's a fire, potential fire, because there's a, the water's flowing. We have all of those under, in our schedule, all of those that we, all those things that we check and inspect under this one fee. Rancho, for instance, they have like a book of things, and theirs, they have a fee to look at the, specifically a fee for the underground, and they have a specific fee for, we checked your bell, there's $35 to check the bell, we have a specific fee for the flow switch, so they break it up so incrementally that it's, when you add it all up, for instance, Rancho was higher than ours. So it's hard to do it apples to apples, but like I said, when I got the whole systems added together, currently, we were lower than all the cities. But if we do this fee assessment, we will be higher than them, but they're also doing a fee study themselves. I did this study with cognizant of that, and I looked at that, but I asked him to, just so that you also knew, that these are the hours that we're spending, that's how much it's costing, and this is how much we're currently receiving. I understand the whole thing of, are we going to be very business-friendly and all of that, I do get that.
You know, I'm painfully aware of the fact that we're not paying what we, you guys, what we should be paying you, I mean, I understand that, that's probably more than anybody, I understand that world, but it is hard, because it's almost like certain medical reforms, you know, if we, we'll just raise the taxes, so to speak, and to recoup what we're doing, and so I'm struggling with that, and it's hard, because I am very supportive of that whole thing, and for those of you in the public that don't understand now, when you build anything, the rules and requirements, you have to have sprinkler systems, and you have to have all that stuff, because the state requires that, for good reason, I understand that, but it is that, that part of me and my soul where I struggle between what the government tells me I have to do and what I should do on my own. What about if we went baby steps and just went up half and then revisited?
I would suggest the question you're asking is probably the core reason we are where we are at, so it's probably a philosophy that has been amongst this council and community for a long time. Presenting it this way is just for your eyes wide open, where do you want to be on that schedule? Here's 100%, you know, currently, we're around that 26% range, where do you want to be on there, considering the overall philosophy of the council and the community? So it's really up to your consideration.
I had a question, and this is probably more related to Conrad. I know that one time, we were attempting to stimulate interest in development by lowering the fees or doing some rebates, what was the status of that?
You reduced building permit and plan-check fee for the building portion by one-third on a commercial and institutional construction.
And is that still in place?
That's still in effect.
Okay. I, I understand that we're probably not charging as much, I'm, I agree with Dr. Daley about the need for us to try to encourage people to build stuff and not make it cost-prohibitive, but I am sensitive to wanting to get reimbursed for it. Help me understand something, so people pay taxes for the fire department to do the services that you guys provide, is this something that you have to do and be paid for over time, because you're not able to do it in the job that you normally have, or is this just an additional fee that you get paid on top of the salary that you get reimbursed?
This is a task outside the suppression efforts of the department, this is on the prevention side, where our fire marshal, our fire inspector, that's their sole, that's what they do.
Okay, so in other words.
You could argue that in the, in prevention world, we're saving ourselves a lot of money in the long run.
No, no, I'm not saying that, so, in other words, a lot of the funding that we have that helps pay for the salary to do fire prevention is thereby attained through this process? Is that a good way to?
Yeah, boy, it's not a lot of the money.
Okay, but it's part of it.
It's, just like any, any building permit fee, or any other permit fee across the city, or inspection fee, it's the same.
More direct question, where does the money go for these fees? When these fees are collected, what budget does that go into?
To Diana.
General fund.
It's a revenue that comes into the general fund.
Okay.
Diana gets it.
Put another word, for building and safety, we hire, we have a contractor, Willdan, our consultant, to do a plan checking and inspection, so it's a pass-through. We collect $100, we give Willdan 75%, 65%, and we keep 35% for management project.
I figured into this.
No, this is building and safety, but for the fire department, right now, because we have our own staff, instead of getting 35%, we only get 26% out of 100%. thirty-five percent, we only get twenty-six percent out of a hundred percent of the cost. And instead of contracting out, we have, we do it in-house.
So essentially, somebody's going to pay for it. And either, either the citizens who aren't building are going to pay for it, or the citizens who are building are going to pay for it. And that's what we have to decide. I think...
They are, but they're, but, that's true, but, you know, all the money's fungible, true.
But at some point, especially when you're as lean as we are, every dollar that's not there is a service, an essential service that's cut. So I think we've done a great job of leaning this city out and providing probably ninety-five percent of the service we used to provide on seventy-five percent of the budget. But the next cuts are muscle and bone. And, you know, I'm a small government conservative as well. We've already got a small government. And my, my major concern about this thing is, is no longer splitting out the small projects from the big ones. Because when you say it's three to five hours for a single-family residence, it looks to me like the five-hour ones are getting a better deal than the three-hour ones. So I think that's my biggest concern there.
I wish there was a way to, to cut some of these out and, you know, look at them in commercial versus residential, or single-family residence versus a development, because I think it's easier for a big company to eat more of that cost. I just hate to...
Yeah, I think on the commercial side, we still have that sliding scale that I think...
Yeah, it does. It's all based on the number of, I went to the, you know, the worst-case scenario, and those buildings that I mentioned, they were all those, gosh, they were hundreds of devices, they were big buildings, and so...
Yeah, I recently built a house, three years ago, I got a bargain, I got seventy-five sprinkler heads for a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So thank you all for subsidizing me. I don't think I deserved it, but thank you.
If you're feeling guilty, I'm sure we're willing to come back and kind of reconcile that.
We say that to every liberal who doesn't mind paying more taxes.
A question for the city attorney. If we approve this as proposed, and then, six months from now, we realize our fees exceed everybody on the surrounding communities, can we revisit this?
Yes, the fees cannot exceed the cost of providing the service, but you can charge less than the full cost. The fees are set by resolution, you'd come back, do another hearing, and reduce the fees at that time.
But just to be bizarre, Loma Linda, six months from now realizes we're charging half again as much as City of Redlands does, and we want to promote development, we can revisit this at that time.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would suspect you'd come right back to it. I mean, I believe in comparability studies, but what'll happen is, you say, okay, well, we're at the twenty-six percentile, so we need to raise ours. We raise ours, and the Redlands, oh, well, you just raised theirs. And then, Marina Valdez says, oh, Redlands just raised theirs. And three years later, we're right back there. I'd like to see, I'm a believer in user fees, people that use the thing, that are actually the ones that are incurring the expense, they should be the ones that have to pay. So I would be more in favor of just saying, what is the cost of providing the service? And just build at that point.
I think, oh, I see, because we're kind of doing that to a certain degree, because it sounds like if it's one to three hours, then you only get billed for one hour if you have one hour?
What the consultant did, where I, he asked me, and I said, okay, I know what it takes me to do a plan check on a single-family, it's, again, it's all based on the number of devices. I know what it takes me hour-wise to do the plan checking, I know what it takes us, on average, that's why I have like three to four and one to three, on average, how to do the rough, and I know how long it takes us to do the finals. And so I gave him those broad ranges, and then he, again, took the average of those. So where I had, he, his numbers are based, where if I had a range of one to three hours for a plan check, his numbers were based on two hours. So again, it was, it was averages of what I know it takes us to do it, then he took an average of that average, and that's how we've, we've come at these numbers.
I had another question, I don't know if anybody else asked it, but do we have some idea of approximately, on average per year, how many, what's the amount that we generate from these fees?
Well, he, yeah, it's, it's there.
Total?
It's about ten grand, and that's on a good year.
Okay. So changing it to a hundred percent means that that ten grand, you multiply by four, so it suddenly becomes forty grand? Is that a good way to say it, then? Or am I missing something? If we, if we average about ten thousand, and it's only twenty-six percent of cost recovery, we multiply that by about three point seven five, so we...
Roughly speaking, I think you're on to that.
Okay. That's my question. I was going to ask, approximately, how much more revenue does this bring to the city?
Well, that was the worst, I wanted to show you, in the worst-case scenario, that's some of these buildings, we did that last year, I wanted you guys to realize that we're putting forty hours' worth of staff hour and half-hours, half-hours into it, to get a building from the plans coming in to me, to the signature on the job card for them to come in and get a C of O. And on that, and on that particular application, you get three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Now, it's a sliding scale, like I said, if you, if you, it's all based on the number of devices, so on a, that's why I've got it divided into small commercials and medium commercials and large commercials. So on a medium commercial, you could go back to that study, and you could say, okay, on the, on the alarms, and you had a hundred devices, from fifty-one to a hundred devices, the fee for that building is one thousand three hundred and eighty. But it's when, and that's kind of the, the trigger point to get you from, you know, an average-sized commercial building to a big commercial building. And that's the ones that just are the...
Let me get off, well, same topic, but off onto something else a little bit. Solar systems. Do you currently have to inspect every single solar system?
What goes on?
What are we looking for?
All, runs gamut on the cities on solar systems.
Because I'm thinking about doing that, so I'm wondering how much it's going to cost me.
I've taken a stance in Loma Linda, the state fire marshal has a, a, I forgot the word, I'm going blank here, they have a new code that they're coming out with, but it's just a temporary one at this point. It'll go in, in our next code cycle, it'll go in there, that it will become code, each individual city has to adopt, adopt where they are right now. Basically, what it says for, for spring, for alarm systems, I'm sorry, for solar panels, it is federal law. There's, a lot of, in the beginning, a lot of homeowners associations said, they took a stance on this and said, no, we're not going to allow these panels to get put up on the roof, it's ugly, and blah, blah, blah. Well, then, there's a federal law there that says, no, it's a, it's a environment, or energy, save energy deals, so you've got to have panels. So the panels, if the contractors had their way, and I don't blame them, they would cover every square inch of a roof with solar panels. But then, it's a, it's a direct conflict with the fire department. In a nutshell, if we get a fire in a building, the only way that we can save that building and save the people, our own guys that are in that building, let's just hope everybody's gotten out, if we don't get a hole cut in that roof and get the heat and the smoke out, then, number one, we're not going to be able to go in that building, and it's guaranteed going to be on the ground. So having said that, if I've got a, if I'm allowing a contractor to cover every square inch of that roof, and we get a fire in that building, there's no way for us to get up there and cut that hole. So I follow the California State Fire Marshal's guidelines, and we, currently, because we have not done any big commercials, that's going to come on the parking structure that's scheduled here on Campus Street. But on these, you've seen the explosion in the city of all the homes putting up the solar panels on the roof. I require three-foot clearance from the ridge down to the first panel, and three-foot clearance on either side. That's so that our guys can ladder that building and have an X-way, X-way. No, no, they come in, you know, they may have forty panels in their plan, and when they come to the counter, if they put all forty on one, because they want to try to get a southern-facing aspect, if they put all forty panels on that roof and take it all the way from the eve to the ridge, and they cover everything, we can't get up there and get at least a cut hole. And we, and why I wanted it ridges, that's the highest point, that all the heat goes up there, and we can cut a hole and get that out and clear out that building. So I require that, number one, and then, and then, number two, we check that, the wires that coming off that solar panel, many of the contractors, it's easier for them just to poke a hole right below the panels and run the cables in the attic. Now, for us, that's a problem, because if you get on the roof, and we've got a chainsaw, you dive that chainsaw on the roof, you don't know if, I don't know that they're putting on the bottom side of the rafters, or if they're putting on the top side of the ceiling joists. Either way, we can either go through them with a chainsaw above or pound through them to get through to the fire, and if it's a sunny day, we run the potential of guys being electrocuted. So I require the two things, that I've got three-foot setbacks on the ridge and the sides, and that the conduit is run across the top of the roof. And what we decided on, and currently for doing that, we had, currently, in our schedule, fee schedule here, I have approximately an hour's worth of time at the counter with the contractor, and then putting administrative, all the things I have to put in our computer to keep tracking of all this. And then it takes roughly a half to an hour on the, on the inspection, and either Jim or I will go and do that. So we roughly have two hours invested for seventy dollars. So we, if you're looking at the schedule here now, I think it's going to two hundred and something for that, for that same service. Because we don't, it doesn't take us a long time. So currently, that's going to a hundred and ninety-five. And the decision was made that on a commercial, we would just keep track of the time, hours invested, and charged at that rate.
Okay, are you done with your presentation?
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
All the questions done? We need to do a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Come forward. State your name and address.
My name is Livian Beer, I live in Loma Linda, nine-two-zero-five-zero, Tulip Street. And I did not come prepared to talk tonight, but this bill got my attention as a resident for over twenty-five years in Loma Linda. So I'd like to advise the council to maybe take time and think about this bill, because we can look also from a different angle. We're looking about a three-hundred percent increase on the resident, and a thousand percent increase minimum on a commercial. And this is a huge increase, we may call it a fee, but for our angle could be a tax. So it is a lot for an owner to take, especially in our city where we have a good part of the old city that requires, needs a lot of new development, new upgrades, and this will be a hinder toward an owner to invest in their property, because fees are going up. So while a school can increase tuition fees, or it can increase fee schedules, a resident cannot just go and find a additional revenue to, to get a permit for. I'm looking at, actually have a negative effect by less houses being remodeled or built, actually getting less revenue than intended, so we may not get as much as expected. Also, I would recommend that the city maybe do their own independent research on this, how much is required by other cities around us instead of a one company. So a few things that maybe take time and look into this, and while we all agree that we have, everybody has to be paid for their work, maybe we can find a compromise, one idea, maybe we can split between residence and commercial, and find a medium way between the two, so the fire department gets reimbursed, but at the same time, it's not a big burden for the residents. Thank you.
Any other member of the public come forward? Mr. Wiley.
Dick Wiley, sit at Loma Linda. I think it's a great presentation that Jamie's done. The thing hit me a while back. My dad had some property up here, they put water tank on. The city said, well, we need some land to do some fill. Well, we'll cut you some pads. And at that time, this goes back many years ago, twenty, thirty years, the fees at that time were not much, when you look at the fee structure then. Now you go in and say, you got to pay for schools, you got to pay this and pay that. And it's almost for, I'm talking strictly one lot. I'm not talking about commercial, residential development, because that's all passed off to the buyer. When you're doing your own home, you look at and you say, golly, what I've got to put down before I even start any grading is a whale of a fee. And what I'm thinking about with this is the possibility of saying, take all of your fee scale for, other than school, you'd have to go, have a different route, and say, what happens if we all, it's all a percentage, but it then also can be increased every year, two, three years, we keep increasing this to get to a hundred percent? You lay it out, as it is now, say, if we're talking terms, if it was fifty thousand dollars just to come in and lay my fees down for a building, for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, that's pretty steep. You know, somebody may back out and say, well, I think I'll wait on this. Whereas if you turn around and say, okay, over the year, years to go, we'll increase it maybe by ten percent every two years, you're getting to this figure of a hundred percent collection. I don't know if that makes sense, but what I'm thinking about is, some of the people that would want to do residential, they just turn around and say, nope, well, now that land sits there. Now you got weed abatement problems, or you got something else, or that's just sitting there, you're not getting much out of it, other than just property tax. So, but this is something that maybe to think about, too, is to increase everything on a percentage of, say, if it's all based out here at twenty-five percent now, okay, let's raise it to forty percent. City's got to absorb sixty percent, but in two years, maybe we'll go to fifty percent, and then we'll go to sixty percent, and we'll go to seventy percent. And that's a little easier to take, because you're slowly doing it. This is the thought.
Just want to make sure there's, there's no confusion in terms of the fire department getting reimbursed for their, their effort. The fire department is funded, the city council funds its emergency services, we are, we are in place, we are funded. It's really back a philosophic decision for the council. Here's, here's the facts, here's where we are in terms of our recovery for that effort, where do you want to be on that? We are general fund, you know, general fund funded, and that is in place. So whether that happens or not, certainly doesn't, isn't changing the service we're delivering. So just want to make sure that the committee was...
And make no mistake, I mean, I am a huge, huge, huge fan of what you guys do, and Jamie, especially you, you work very, very hard. And I'm very thankful, I want to continue doing everything we're doing here. It just, it, in terms of what I understand, it's just like the state telling the counties, you are now going to have to house low-level offenders, figure out a way to fund it. And so we come up with all these ideas, which, at higher levels of government, which we propose are to benefit the community and benefit the citizens, but they end up costing us more and more and more. And it is a philosophical decision, and I'm struggling with it, I'm just being honest about it, so...
And we don't look at this as a vote of support or non-support for what we're doing.
Good, I don't want you to do that, because honestly, I wish we could, I wish we could increase salaries, because I believe the amount of work that our people do compared to other cities and organizations is far more, and, and it's not, we're not comparable, but, I don't know.
This is simply where we want to be in our, in our fees. It certainly doesn't...
Yeah, but believe me, I feel the same way, I feel the same, I have the same qualms that you guys do, and I just wanted to present to the council and the mayor, so that you realize where we are, and what our current fee schedule is, and the hours, staff hours that we are expending to do these jobs, and, and to give you, based on my data input to that consultant, on what I know it takes us to do it, what a hundred percent recovery would be, where you put that scale in between, it's...
I'd like to see if there's any other member of the public that would like to speak. We're still in public hearing. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and Jarv.
Can I, can I give a recommendation? Just like Councilman Papeskew said, right now, we reduce the fee for residential and commercial, equivalent to about seventy-five percent, we charge about seventy-five percent of the cost. How about I come up with a compromise, let's do seventy-five percent first of a residential, single-family, and, and at cost for a commercial, because that would...
Probably fifty percent residential cost.
Why don't we, rather than having a bidding war, why don't we, why don't we discuss the philosophy, because that's, that seems to be what we're interested in. I'm always fascinated by the arguments that occur among fiscal... I'm always fascinated by the arguments that occur among fiscal conservatives about the issue of user fees. And, you know, you mentioned user fees, I'm a believer in user fees, and the reason I am is because I am not a socialist. And it's fascinating that the most conservative people that I meet are really socialists on this issue. And they'll come out and they'll say, "How dare you put in a fee, because that, I'm already paying my taxes." And I say, "Yes, but you're consuming services." We're actually, we are a lean, mean fighting machine now. We were a flabby city. You know, we didn't know how flabby we were until we got a huge budget crunch, and found out that we could trim our belt seventy, down to seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent cut, and still perform all the services. You know, this is, we're an ideal city. You're getting a bargain now. Anything further, and you start getting potholes, you start getting weeds, and, you know, all these things. So I'm just fascinated that people say, "Well, I would rather have a socialistic system where I pay through my vehicle license fee, through my property tax, through all this stuff, and I'll let somebody come in and build a project, and make a profit at doing it, or live in a great house, and I'm willing to subsidize them through my, through my general tax base." And in essence, at this point in our history, they're not subsidizing them through their taxes, because they're already paying their taxes. What they're doing is they're subsidizing those people by giving up pothole repair, and by giving up weed trimming, and park maintenance. That's how you subsidize these projects, if you don't charge the full freight. So my belief is, charge the full freight, and if our whole government did that, we'd have a smaller government. But you've gotta pick, you've gotta decide.
Where does it stop?
Am I philosophically socialist or not?
Where does it stop? Should we charge the, should we have the police charge us when they come out and handle a burglar alarm? Should we have them come out and charge us when they take a police report, and charge us by the hour?
I'm not doctrinaire on this topic.
Well, I mean, and I'm, this is, this is good, I'm enjoying this debate.
This is a great discussion, because everybody comes, and it costs me afterwards, all my conservative friends, and they say, "How could you do so?" Well, I say, "Well, what about you? You're a socialist."
I'm with you, but I think there's certain things that, as a government, we dictate that our citizens have to have, and then we don't necessarily think through how to pay for it, and we pass that cost along. And we have a mechanism in place to pay for the position that Jamie holds, and this is one of those duties as part of that position. And I understand we're trying to recoup some of the cost involved in that, which we're kinda doing. I just don't know that we have to be a hundred percent on everything in every position, otherwise...
I agree, but there's, but see, there are, pardon me for interrupting.
No, 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 this is good.
Yeah, I, we don't want to be here all night. Yeah, I believe that there are, there are some things that are for the collective good. A library, you don't have to go to the library to get benefits from a library. You've got an educated neighbor. That's good for you. I think schools are a collective good, for the same reason. I think fire service, you know, we could be like those Tennessee towns, if you didn't pay your fire fee, we'll let your house burn down. Well, in Loma Linda, we don't have the luxury of having a mile between our houses. You know, you look at the sixteen-sixty-six London Fire, if your neighbor's house burnt down, your house burnt down. So there's a collective good in having a fire department. So to me, the test, to answer your question, the test is, does it benefit an individual or a business, or does it benefit the community as a whole? And I think when it benefits an individual, I'm more inclined to go with user fees. If it benefits the community as a whole, I'm more inclined to go with a kind of a broad-based taxation model. But that's just my, my...
All right, let's...
I have a question and a suggestion. First question is, when we passed our budget, did we, in that budget, include any possible increases of fees? Okay.
No.
Then my suggestion is a little bit related to what Mr. Bier and Mr. Wiley both said. One was, think a little more carefully about this before pursuing it, and Mr. Wiley suggested that perhaps we staggered the increases. What might be a good way to address this is to continue this item until the next meeting, but at that meeting, provide us with a breakdown of what the increases would be if it was thirty percent, fifty percent, seventy percent. I know we can make a decision on that tonight, but to be honest with you, I wasn't able to determine that we had such an increase of three-hundred percent and a thousand percent by looking at this report. So perhaps one that says, "If you increase it this much, this is approximately how much percentage-wise," and that makes it a little bit easier for me to digest and look at, and then we can reach a compromise as to what we think is a suitable fee. I think there's probably a need to increase the fees. I am not supportive of the current rate. I can tell you that right now.
I just...
You're not supportive of the rate where it is today?
Proposed rate.
Correct, correct, that's on the table right now, which is basically...
You're not supportive of the proposed...
That's what I meant, okay.
I just wanted to tell one other story, and I know you guys are gonna throw rocks at me, because I'm keeping you here, but let's see, we go to the DMV, and the DMV hires an employee, and that employee, that person's job is to take pictures for your driver's license. And you stand in line, and that person is taking pictures, but you don't need your picture taken, you need to take the written test. Well, this person who's taking pictures doesn't have any pictures to take right now, so they sit there at their picture-taking station, and they wait, and they wait. But you need to take a written test. And what I'm hearing is, is we should hire another person to sit there to take, to administer written tests. As opposed to, we pay the person already, they're doing their picture-taking, but they have a break when they're not taking pictures, and they could administer the written test. You know, I actually was gonna give a different example, but I'm trying to stay away from law enforcement and fire and all that. My point is, is that sometimes government employees are not always working a hundred percent every minute of the day in that job that they're assigned to do, and they can be utilized to do other things. I speak from experience, and I know that happens with me, too. Not a hundred percent of my day could I actually be dedicated to my assignment, so I'm utilized in other areas to benefit.
You always work harder when the cops crew is on...
Just, just my point is, and I, again, I don't want to make reference to any specific position or career, but I just think, in government, sometimes we have to, we have to think about sharing duties and responsibilities, and we may have downtime when we can pick up some of these things. So just because it costs, just because our guys spend an hour doing that, doesn't mean that it's deferring them from some other job, or taking away from other. Now, if you present that to us, and say, "Hey, I'm not handling weed abatement, I'm not handling any type of prevention programs or anything else, because I'm inundated with this other stuff," then I think that presents in itself an issue. Oh, no, we need to address this, because we're not properly, you know what I mean? So, that's it, done with my comment.
I won't say anything else.
I, just two quick comments. One is, I recently had to renew my passport, and I was shocked to see how much that was. It was, you know, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, obviously, we already pay taxes for the federal government to provide State Department services, but yet there are fees that they charge for certain services. So I accept that, and I think that's part of life. Here at, we don't have much control over that, but here in the city, there are decisions we do make that actually impact the residents directly. And I agree with Mr. Bier, if you're a small homeowner, if suddenly you're shown how much more you're gonna be paying to build this house, you might think twice before doing so. And we want to encourage people to, you know, redo their houses, have a better community. If I'm mistaken, Mr. Conrad specifically pointed out that when we decided to rebate back some of the plan check fees, that actually encouraged some new restaurants to come into town. So with that, having said that, I think we just need to be very cautious as we move forward, that in our effort to try to recoup some of the cost, we may find ourselves decreasing the opportunity to generate more activity in user fees that actually can help us pay for some of that. So something to keep in mind, and I'd really like for us to consider bringing this item back with a schedule, and I'm hoping to, that you would entertain that idea, that we may look at it a little bit more carefully.
And with regard to that, I'm not opposed, and we have in the past essentially had a fee holiday offered, you know, now through the end of the year, decrease in all the fees. And whether those actually worked or not, I don't know, but I think it would be nice to say that our fees actually cover the cost, you know, because that's really the purpose of a permit. When I first looked at permits before I knew anything about government, I thought it was, you know, just, you know, "I'm the troll guarding this bridge, you wanna cross it, you gotta pay a fee." But it's actually, it's actually oversight recovery, that's basically what it is. And, you know, somebody's gotta pay it.
When I started asking questions, I really didn't mean to launch a political, philosophical debate that ranged from fiscal conservatism to socialism. I'm merely wanting to ensure that we try to be alert to our competing, or I should say, our competing surrounding communities, to be sure that Loma Linda continues to be attractive to individuals, as well as other developers that have plans that we're comfortable with, that fit our general plan, to do business with us. That's my thrust, and I understand the economics of user fees, and philosophically, I don't have a problem with them. But I want to be sure we remain competitive with our surrounding communities at the same time, because we need to try to foster growth of both business, as well as other types of development. But thank you, it was a good report, and I appreciate your patience.
So my ask, you want me to bring it back, I should bring it back with, first, number one, the comparison to our surrounding city, and second is do a, can it be a fifteen percent increment instead of...
Whatever you recommend, but at least give us some options as increments.
Increment, okay.
But that's the only suggestion, you don't have to do what I say, we have to all agree on it.
The math, the math is pretty simple, you know, you either go with a full freight or you don't, and you can split the difference or whatever, but I, I think it's probably, given the volume that's out there, I think it's probably just too much of a management disaster to have kind of a gradually sliding number over each year, you know. When does the new fee go into effect? Is it when you get your entitlement, or is it when you apply, or is it when, you know, I think it would be a mess to administer.
I think maybe you're misunderstanding. What I wanted to see was options where we say, "Okay, we're gonna go ahead this year, increase the fees by fifteen percent. That's it, we're increasing by fifteen percent." And then come back to us next year, you know, and then at that point, increase by fifteen percent. My concern is that, the way it's proposed, we're literally increasing it significantly, and that's my concern. By giving us an option, maybe that some of us may decide that a hundred percent is fine, it's a user fee, or some of us may decide that, no, that's way too high, here's an alternative. Obviously, we can do that right now, if you're willing to do that now, then I'm open to that. I think just because of the amount of debate this has taken, I think it might behoove us to actually think a little bit before we actually jump on board, but it's up to you guys to decide.
Now, is it true that not all houses have sprinklers? You have to be in the urban interface zone to get a sprinkler system? Or everybody gets them now?
Our ordinance says, is any new, in any new home, like I said, any new home that's being built will have sprinklers, and any remodel that the footprint is fifty percent more than the original. Homes that were built in the fifties, they don't, they currently don't have sprinklers, but as I say, if they remodel them, and they do a significant remodel, they'll be required to put sprinklers in.
If, kind of that comparison piece of this is also a factor, would you like us to hold off until we know that those current processes that are in the community right now are wrapped up, so we have the latest comparisons?
No, I don't think we need to, I don't think...
But that may be helpful, because it's not like we have a bunch of projects just lined up.
We do, we have...
Potentially, we do.
We have the apartment, I mean, the Alzheimer on New Jersey and Orange.
Okay, so do we, do we wanna, do we want to maybe partition this thing into commercial versus SFR?
You'd take effect immediately.
Well, that's up to you, but right now, we have that one, we have the southeast corner of Mountain View and Barton.
My question is, would the new fee structure that we would theoretically implement tonight apply to projects that have already been approved?
It would theoretically apply to projects that would already be approved because of plan check fee, but I would caution council to do that, because these developers have budgeted their costs...
That's the point of my question.
Before they got the entitlement.
Yeah.
No. Yeah, no, it's not, it's not laid out that way.
I make a motion that we refer this to staff for those, further, that further information and bring it back to us. Because it's a public hearing item, it should be continued to a date specific.
Okay, well, at the next council meeting...
I think we could, they could probably do it by the next meeting, though.
August twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. Summer schedule.
Okay, so that being the motion, is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We'll move on to our consent calendar, with your pleasure.
I move it, I'm gonna pull item number eighteen, I have a couple of questions on that.
Which one?
Number eighteen.
Why don't we just discuss it? Is there a second for, well, it's, why don't we just discuss eighteen, then we'll go with the motion. Go ahead, what's your question?
Okay. I'm noticing that we are reapproving four different contracts for various services. My question regarding Republic ITS, and those are the folks that do the traffic signal maintenance, and then we've got Golden West Landscape, which basically looks like they do landscaping maintenance for the city, and then we've got KBM, which does all of our janitorial services here at the city hall. My question is, since the amounts on these contracts are quite high, are we going out to bid and making sure that we got the lowest, or how do we reach?
We did.
We did.
All this, we went out to bid, and then we gave them three-year contract plus an option for additional year here, up to three years. So yes, we went out to bid for all of this.
Okay, when did we go out to bid, three years ago, or just recently?
The Republic ITS was like two years ago, Golden West, boy, time fly, we had three years ago, and the janitorial service was just last year.
So basically, we're giving them the option to continue for one more year?
Right.
At the same rate? Yeah, that's my next question.
Yes, yes.
No increase?
No increase, not, none of us have increased.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
And with Albert Goran associate, we didn't go out to bid, because we used existing company that, that doing the traffic signal synchronization for sandbag and cauterine.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're...
Yes, we went out to bid.
...to decrease our costs as much as possible, and not just renewing it unless we made some effort to try to keep it low.
Right, for some, for examples, all three of them, B, C, and D, have a cost of living adjustment to it, but I said, "No, I'm not gonna give it to you, because right now, everything is down," so...
Okay, that was it, that was my only question, thank you.
And I'm assuming that we're happy with the quality of service, or we wouldn't, staff wouldn't be recommending this.
Especially the Republic ITS, there's not too many contractors that do traffic signal maintenance anymore. The one that used a contract got bought out by, you know, and the firm, and the firm got bought out by this Republic ITS, so...
Okay, the entire consent calendar is up for your motion.
I will make a motion that we move the entire consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Go to new business. Voting delegates, alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. I think we have sent city staff.
Yes, every year I've been attending, but you're welcome to, I'm an alternate, so...
I, I'm on the Board of Directors for the League of Cities, and on a couple of subcommittees, so they meet four times a year, and I try to make all four of those meetings, I didn't make the last one in June.
Do you want to be the delegate? Last time, we actually appointed Jarv, because none of us wanted to be delegate. Did you want to be the official delegate for the city?
I am the official delegate for the city, but this, we're just talking about this particular conference, is that what you were talking about?
This is, this is...
Okay, this is just the League of City Conference.
I think you two are a good pair, so we'll send you both.
Yeah, I'm right. I actually attended that three or four years ago. I think anybody could attend, but if we, I guess we officially need to make a delegate who's gonna actually attend, I think... attend, and I think.
Yeah, that's, and that's what I was gonna say. I sit on the board, but I don't think we need to, I necessarily have to go. I think this is just for that meeting, but I will be at the meeting anyway because that's required to be on, as part of my board duties.
I think any, any of the council members can attend if they choose to, so.
And I actually encourage that, especially for Dr. Leonard.
For Dr. Leonard, there will be a special session for our new council, just like Dr. Daley did last year, so.
I did it two years ago.
Yes, two years ago.
I highly recommend it. I got, I don't, I still don't think I understand all the ethical dimensions of being a public servant even after attending, so it is worthwhile, if only to alert you to the complexity of what you're up against.
Too late now, you're already here.
If you're up in Sacramento, you can stop by Jared Brown's office. He actually came down and visited me.
Actually, this is actually a conference in San Diego for all the cities. I think what you're referring to was.
No, but actually, I think, but I think the new training for new council members is adjacent to this.
Oh, really?
I think that's, that's the way it ran in January.
Okay, so can we do that one by, are we allowed to do things by just consensus? Okay, then I think we've got consensus on that. Let's go to 21. Someone wants to dissolve the senior center board. Tell us why.
Yes, sir. Back in 2000, the year 2000, the city established the senior central board for the construction and give a guidance and direction for the construction of the senior center. The senior center was completed back in September of 2002, and it now has been almost 10 years. And this past couple meetings, we have no people attending, and due to they get older and they not be attending the board, and since I reduced the staff, now I'm pretty much running the senior center too. And they pretty much come to me and ask me to do this and that, so we just did it for them, and if you have money. And so I think it would be a better use of staff time to eliminate the board meeting and have the staff run the senior center with any recommendation from any senior members.
I move the recommendation.
Just a question. Usually, when you have a center or organization like that, the people that are actively involved with it want some role in the governance of it. I assume in this case that they're so old they're apathetic, or what's?
They just want to come for a dance. Like, I've been running the dance since Saturday.
Because I was thinking, maybe we ought to appoint Stan Brower on this board. He's retired.
So I've been bringing food, set up, and close the facility, so name it, I'm doing it, so I'm, I just want to eliminate one, some of the meetings I have to attend.
We're still doing the lunches too, right?
Yes. It'd be provided by the county, so.
Okay, I just, I'm not opposed to this. I just want to be sure that we, there's some mechanism that's sensitized to meeting the needs of the people that are actively using it. And usually, that would be through a board process, but if we don't need that, then outside of inviting Stan Brower to bring his rocking chair and oversee this, I don't know what else we'd do.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, and I don't know if we can do this, but I was gonna make a suggestion that maybe we pull reports of officers and move it ahead in our schedule to allow any department heads that, if there's no reports to be given, maybe they can, they can leave and we continue with our business.
Well, I think they can always leave anytime.
Madam Clark, is that something we can do?
This is important because a lot of our staff attend all these committees, meetings, and I would like them to be here and give input on if we need to be for the selection, and maybe ask why we need to have these committees, and what they do.
Suggestion withdrawn.
But any of you feel free to go if you're bored. That includes everyone.
That includes us, too.
Okay. Next, we have our city committees, commissions, boards. We'll handle this the same way we did the external committees. We have our budget committee. It looks to me like we've got two longstanding members who would like to come back for another round.
I make a motion that we reappoint them.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. We go to historical commission. That also looks like we have four longstanding members who wish to be reappointed.
I make a motion, reappoint all four of them.
Second.
And he, go ahead.
Just a question. Do we take attendance on these things? Because I, so are these all, I'm not talking just about the terms expiring members, but the others, are they pretty actively?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So Georgia here, she's a ten.
Oh, Georgia, I knew Georgia would be a ten.
And they go out and attend every meeting, so yes, they are very active.
Okay, thank you.
Binsky, too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, our, our staff have not been shy about bringing forward bad attendance records in the past when someone came up for renewal, so.
There's just one guy that hasn't lived in Loma Linda for 30 years.
I presume the absence of a comment means that attendance is acceptable. Okay. So yeah, if it's bad attendance, you'll probably hear. Okay, so that one, there was a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We go to Parks. We have five members, and it looks like we didn't get any comments about whether they want to be appointed again.
I make a motion, we appoint them anyway.
Too bad. I'm just a little bit concerned. We've got a little bit of a lopsided.
Well, I'm, that's my issue, I guess. I didn't hear from some of them until very, very late, but all of them have asked to be renewed.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that if we, if they all term out at the same time, we could end up with a loss of historical perspective. But I guess it probably doesn't matter because they'll probably fall off in kind of a random way, so the lopsidedness, I guess I'm not too concerned.
So all five are wanting to be reappointed?
Yes, they've been very active, all of them.
So move.
And is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, is there any opposition to that? Apparently not, so they're all reappointed. So we move to the Personnel Board. That one is, we've got someone who's not willing to be reappointed, Norm Meyer. Ronald O. is up for reappointment and is willing to serve. So the recommendations are to reappoint Mr. O. and declare vacancy and post a vacancy notice. Is that acceptable?
I move that we do that.
Mr. O. was the, was the board's appointment. There are two positions appointed by the council, and that was Mr. Meyer and Mr. Miller. And then Mr. O. was appointed by those two. At this point, Mr. Meyer has declined consideration, so you would have a choice. You could make Mr. O. a council appointment, and then have the board appoint the third party, or you could declare a vacancy and have someone else be a council appointment.
Oh, I say let's make Mr., let's elevate him to a council appointment, and then let the board handle once you do your advertisement and find somebody.
I second that.
Any opposition to that? Hearing none, we go to the pièce de résistance, the Planning Commission. A little bit of contention for that role. Looks like we have two people who left the board, one because of family concerns and one because of his demotion to city council. And then we have, why don't we, why don't we start with the expiring term? Carolyn Palmieri is there. Do you have any pleasure with regard to her reappointment? She's willing to serve.
I'm, I nominate, I make a motion that we reappoint her.
I'll second.
I'd like to ask Councilman Leonard to comment on how active any of these applicants have been, and as well as Palmieri. I don't, I'm not familiar with her and what kind of role she's played, and what her attendance record is, and does she do her homework, and same with all the rest.
She sits in this seat, actually, and she comes when she's in town. I don't, I don't see her not coming. So, and she has a lot of contributions to, to the commission, so I would agree with him. I think it'd be good for, to reappoint her.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to that? Hearing none, she's reappointed. Now, we have four applicants for two remaining seats. You've all had access to their questionnaires. They've all answered in great detail, some more than others. One of my concerns about this process is that in the past, you know, that if you, if you handle multiple applicants to a few slots by, by making a motion, then there's kind of this awkward, well, I kind of supported the other person, so there's this awkward phase where you have to vote no on someone, and it's kind of a, kind of an embarrassing quandary. I'm wondering, would we be better served by maybe having us have like two votes each and see who has more votes, and, you know, I'm trying to come up with a better approach than just, you know, whoever nominates first wins the, wins the game.
I know we have at least one applicant. I'd like to know if there are any other applicants that are here that would like to.
There are, there are three of them here that I can see. So I think we'll, but I'm just talking about when we get to that point, because there's this, there's this urgency, right? When the last person has spoken, that someone will nominate their favorite, and I think that's not necessarily the most equitable way to do it, this kind of an election. So I think we can talk about our issues with one another, because, you know, we haven't talked about this before being here because of the Brown Act, and it'd be nice to kind of compare notes, because I'd like to know how you guys think about their presentations and their things. And then I would like to see us vote with, you know, maybe a piece of paper, and each one of us put two candidates forward, and we'll bring them together and find out if someone has a clear majority. If there are two people with a clear majority and two who don't, the process is uncomfortable with over.
There's two, yeah.
Each.
So this is kind of like, what is it, Survival Island, where you?
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm always concerned that it's, you know, whoever jumps the gun first gets precedence, and we've had some really awkward votes, especially for this planning commission.
So each of us write down two names?
Yeah, but let's go through the process of hearing, vetting their applications before we do that. But I'm just saying, once you've heard everything, and we discuss among ourselves the pros and cons, you can kind of get a feel who likes what, but then we'll proceed to that, if that's acceptable. Okay? We can always change it later. If we don't like it, we can go a different direction. So why don't we start with them as they're, in the order they're listed in the program? So the first one is Liviu Imbire.
Good evening, again.
Good evening.
I'd like to disappreciate very much, because as I, as I mentioned before, a resident of Loma Linda for over 25 years. Loma Linda has become for me not just a city where I live, but it's part of me being an American. I landed in the United States in Loma Linda in 1987, and this has been not only a place of employment. I worked for Loma Linda for almost the time, but it's been a place for my education, where I went to school to Loma Linda University. My children also are part of this culture of going to school and working for Loma Linda, and I feel like this opportunity for me is something that I can give back to what city afforded me. It's part of my family, it's part of being me. I also serve in the Trails Committee for about, Trail Committee for about four years now, and I take advantage of that by going and enjoying our South Hills preserves every week, more than once a week if I can. I work in this city, so it is something that I really relate to. The culture of the city that I like to preserve, and combine the development and future of the city with what the city is all about. And I believe that South Hills Preserve is a good example about what the city is all about, combining health with development, with nature, and I'd like to be part of this, the team in the future, and bring my involvement and put on it. Thank you.
Quick question?
Stay up for a little while, we'll ask some questions.
Go ahead. I'm just curious. You said that you'd like to see the opportunity to eliminate traffic to and from Loma Linda health system by a rail system or electric bus system. Can you expand on that?
Yes, I, I was envisioning of that and mostly looking at Loma Linda as a blue zone. What else can we do to future development, thinking of a 50-year, maybe a long-term planning for the city, how we're going to resolve traffic issue, which is starting to be coming, especially at 7:30 in the morning and 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And as already, Loma Linda Medical Center has a system with buses that they have parking in outskirts of the city and bring employees to buildings. Something like, like that model can be expanded, so we can have the downtown, or we don't have a downtown center, more friendly for bicycles, for walking, for, and being able for those that come to work or leave to go in and out of the city without actually using a car or, so this is something that I want to bring up, not necessarily, but future vision. And I believe that for a city that doesn't have a vision for future will run behind. Thank you.
I got a little bit of a twitch when you say, I admire Loma Redlands as a city as a model.
I, that's, actually, that's, that's one, one, because I'd like to, not only, I like to be truthful, and I have to tell something that we like to learn from the surrounding cities, and something that we can mimic, and something that we can, and I think I mentioned a few good examples, that we can learn from them and attract. We have so many students, and it's a shame, or that they go in Redlands downtown to have an ice cream or something, when we can attract them in our city and do the same, and increase revenues for other.
So what is your vision for how we could accomplish that in Loma Linda? Where would that happen? What do we need to do differently?
We're looking, for example, I was, I'm looking at all this development that's going along Barton Road, and thinking like the plots are right where your Galicia's is. That's a very, that's little shop attracts a lot of youth. To that extent, maybe thinking about how can we make European style, having where a student can come and sit down and read a book and study, or can drink a coffee, or having something, a friendly city. And we can get to development to become commercialized, and at the same time, we may lose this countryside, but friendly place where you can go be close to school, and at the same time, being able to walk to a place and enjoy the evening, and also study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is Dr. Katibi.
Hi. Well, good evening, members of the council. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. I'll just be brief and take a few seconds of your time to talk to you about two things. One, a little bit about who I am, and secondly, a little bit about my vision for the city and why I'm running, or why I'm seeking appointment to this position. With regards to a little bit who I am, as you know, my name is Nikon Katibi. I'm an anesthesiologist here at Loma Linda University Medical Center, where I serve as a physician, obviously, and I also serve on the Medical Staff Executive Committee. Why I'm asking for appointment to the Planning Commission is simple. Community activities, involvement is nothing new to me. Whether you take it from the academic standpoint, I've been student body president in college and medical school and business school. Specifically, I've been involved with my, my community as well, serving on the Traffic Commission, the Holiday Parade Commission, local boards, including the Chamber of Commerce. So I've been very actively involved. Specifically, Loma Linda for me means a lot. Specifically, Loma Linda for me means a lot, because it's a community where I'm living at, it's a community where I plan to grow, both professionally as well as a family. And it's important for me to preserve and protect what was stated back in, or adopted back in May of 2009 regarding to the general plan, preserving this small-town, family-friendly feeling, yet still judiciously, you know, promoting economic expansion. And that's why I'm seeking your support, because I'm in line with those visions that were adopted back in 2009. And I like to do my best to really preserve those, so, and I'm open to any questions. Thank you so very much.
In your bio, your self-putting bio here, it says, "I would encourage the city decision leaders to allot a significant percentage of existing and future land uses towards diverse residential housing opportunities." What do you mean by that?
Great question. In essence, I just mean making sure it is a community where, you know, it's still viable to live and work in, plainly.
Can you elaborate a little bit more?
Sure, absolutely. So for example, as a, let's say, an employee of Loma Linda, I think, actually, in any city for that regard, you would love the opportunity to live and work in the same place. And that's all I mean, being able to have that ability to live and work in the same place, so.
Was there a particular type of housing, do you think, that would accommodate people who work at the medical center or the university?
If you're suggesting, if you're suggesting more subsidized housing or low-income housing, as I'm getting here is, I'm more for, I mean, just like you guys said, I tend to be a little more conservative, so, I mean, I'd like to, you know, just make sure we protect our values of our housing here in Loma Linda, which means making sure we have a, you know, a safe community, quality schools, first-class services for our citizens, and attract those types of professionals to our community who are interested in those.
I just had one other question.
Absolutely.
Other people listed, you know, different cities that they admire, and I find it interesting you listed the city of Walnut, and I don't think I've ever been to Walnut, so...
Okay.
I mean, is it a place I need to visit?
I think so. You know, it resembles Loma Linda in the sense that they too would like to maintain and preserve and protect that small-town feel, and, you know, and create that family-friendly environment where you can go for strolls late at night, strolls during the day, yet still, you know, economically still a viable city, where they are, you know, create a great business, friendly business environment, yet not over-expanding, creating a lot of congestion and traffic and crime to the area. So I think it was a good mix. At the same time, they have a great trail system, allows you to do lots of mountain biking and walks, if you're into that, as many of Loma Linda residents are. And I found it to be a very similar city to, or similar ideology to Loma Linda, so I'd be happy to take you up there.
Thank you.
You got it.
I appreciate your application and interest in civic, and being actively involved in your city. And you've written a lot of good stuff here. Boil it down to what would be, what are the three priorities that you would be focused on as a planning commissioner in terms of what your interest is in the city of Loma Linda?
Great question. I'd say first and foremost would be preserving open space, open space and trails throughout the city. Because for someone such as myself, who really enjoys the outdoors, it's one of the things that attracted me to Loma Linda. And so being able to preserve the South Hills, those areas where so many of my friends and colleagues and just members of the community go to enjoy, I think making sure we preserve that and protect that area from development would be a key issue for me. I think too, secondly, given my history of serving on the Traffic Commission, I would say is making sure this community, you know, doesn't get more congested than it needs to be. And that means being very prudent with business developments and attractions to the area, fast foods, you name it, big restaurants, chains, what have you. I like the small-town feel that we have. I don't think we need to attract these larger places, larger businesses and franchises. I mean, there's communities like Redlands that are close by, that can go there. So I'd say those two in particular would be the main issues I'd probably stick with. Obviously, as a member of the city planning commission, my job is to investigate and research to the best of my abilities, unwavering, unbiased, and provide you guys with the necessary information you guys need to make the best possible decisions. So if there's a specific issue or topic that needs to be addressed or investigated, that is my job. As a researcher as well, published over 30 papers, scientific papers in various journals, articles, and magazines, I do a great job with researching, investigating, and providing people with the best unbiased data possible. So I would not hesitate to do the same as a member of the planning commission.
We're largely a bedroom community of a large university and other medical center. How do you feel about recruiting more businesses into Loma Linda?
Clarify a little bit more, attracting more businesses to the medical center?
We have a limited business tax base.
Yes, sir.
Do you see that as a priority for us, to try to attract, to make this business friendly in terms of what the planning commission's work is to attract businesses into Loma Linda?
Well, our job first and foremost, you're right, it's important to allow those businesses first that are here in the community to have an environment where they can prosper and do well economically. With regards to attracting new businesses to the areas, again, it goes back to my belief, and it's similar to what's placed out in the general plan that was adopted, is judiciously expand economic opportunities. That includes businesses to the area. I'm sure Loma Linda is a very attractive spot for businesses to come. Again, we, as the members of the planning commission, should be very prudent and unbiased with our decisions and recommendations with certain businesses that might want to come and expand. Obviously, at the end of the day, it's members of the city council who make the decision, but again, I would err on the side of being very prudent and judicious about companies and expansions in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
In your statement, you say that as a member of various community boards, there are numerous accounts where your views or opinions have distinctly differed from a proposed project. Do you have any examples?
Hey, question was tough for me, and let me, it's one of those tough things where they say, "Tell me some of your weaknesses," and it's very easy for me to tell you, you know, a couple of weaknesses or strengths. But this is one of those questions that had some difficulty for me, because I try my best to, I mean, to, the best of my abilities to go, to be as unbiased, as unbiased as possible. And if there comes a point where there's obviously some type of conflict of interest of any sort, I would not hesitate to acknowledge it or step back and excuse myself quietly. So it was very tough for me to come up with an answer, Dr. Lomond, I must say, but know that if there was a situation that came up, I would not hesitate to exclude myself, express my concerns, personal concerns of my involvement or certain activities. So. These are great questions, tough questions.
You know other questions? Okay, then we'll...
Thank you so much.
We'll get our next applicant, the next one, if he's here, Mr. Kozrowbady. Not here, okay. Then we'll have Leland Lubinski come forward.
I, I guess we'll discuss them after we're done?
Yeah, okay.
I was born here in Loma Linda. I'm somewhat of the community and I'm somewhat not of the community. I think there are rare things. While my family were Sabbath lovers, we were never part of the dominant church in the So I went to public school and not to the academy. I went into the service. This is a pacifist town, it's not a tradition of military service. I was an early and outspoken opponent of the standard rhetoric for a long time in the city, that all we needed was rooftops, because once we had rooftops, the big boxes would follow. I felt very deracinated when the city council decided to give the, a good part of what used to be the Mission District, nor, what's still on the map is called North Loma Linda, to cede that to San Bernardino. You've seen what they've done with that area. I was part of the vision process a little while ago now in the city, where we did a huge survey, and with the conclusion that most people in this town really cherish that feeling that sometimes we still feel on, at the end of the week, when things are quiet and different from every place else. I've always attempted to promote that feeling in this town. I was a member of the City Historical Commission, and we had a long-range investigation and what to be done with the northeast section of this town, and whether what developers told us upfront were really their ultimate motives. We were, the commission was the place where our historical mission area began, and so there's a lot of contradictions there. I'm encouraged by the previous speakers. I think you, the city council would do well with any of those, as well as myself. So here I am.
Any questions?
I appreciate your service as a member of the Loma Linda Historical Commission, and your active service, that's noteworthy, and I appreciate it. I'm a little set back when the question is, what local cities do you admire and believe Loma Linda should emulate and why? I think that the point of the question is to seek a positive vision, and your response is basically guiding us to avoid bad examples of communities around us. Can you give me a positive vision, your positive vision for the city of Loma Linda? What should we be working to improve our city?
Well, number one, if you want a locality, I'd say let's look at Evanston, Illinois. There was a series not too recently on the Chronicles of Higher Education, of a town very much like ours, where we have one large educational, in this case, medical organization that is huge compared to the city, to the city itself. I think that's one area we could lurk at, is ways in which we could rebalance the relationship between, between that institution and this institution.
But what positive attributes? I'm less concerned with a direct analogy to another city, but what positive vision do you have for Loma Linda that you would work to implement?
One, I think we have to readjust the imbalance, the geographical imbalance between above the tracks and below the tracks. I'm from below the tracks. I remember once the city council voted to put in a dog park, when we didn't even have a basketball hoop on the other end of the city. That's a sort of imbalance I'd like to see. I think in terms of where I would like to see business in the city, I think there's a real problem already with formula businesses, which I think is the same thing as franchise businesses. I think that small businesses tend to keep their profits in the city, and formula businesses tend to treat us like a colony. Come in, push where they can push, make the best deal, and hopefully establish a pattern of business in which money flows out of this area to support nice things in other areas.
Thank you. No, thank you, that helps.
Well, I, I would say that, I think you can rest assured that Councilman Papesco and I live on the other side of the tracks with you, and so I think we're all of like mind, though, on this current council, and we just want the best for the city, but I appreciate you coming today, sir.
Now, Mr. Lubinski, you've mentioned in the past your support for a change in the core of the city. Could you elaborate on that, like a, like a core of the city, maybe a little bit more people living closer to the university?
Oh, I see, oh, yes. There's been a lot of debate, I was part of the process, on the general plan. We always talk about low density, high density, those things change up and down. I think a corollary to open space is a high-density part of the city. I would like to see that in the city core, which I mean around the hospital, where there were, where we would encourage, how could I say tall developments without saying tall developments? I know that a lot of people have a fear of heights, but I think we can go up rather than out. I've always been an opponent of sprawl. In my vision of the city, I think there would be a lot of people, senior citizens who want to be close to the services that the center of our city provides, who would very much like a nice place to rent, maybe that has a family-owned business, a dry cleaning shop, a smaller convenience store, you know, down on the first floor, you know, a place to work out on the third floor, apartment up above. When we do have development, a lot of money comes into the city for low-income housing. My understanding is when low-income people live with middle-income people, they tend to act like middle-income people, and I think that's a place where that could happen, that, you know, somebody might enjoy an apartment in the basement of a building that actually I think there's a, you know, people come from all over the world, when they come to Loma Linda, they think we're part of LA, and in a way we are, so let's, let's give them, let's give them a urban neighborhood experience downtown, and that will take some of the pressure off. We have beautiful garden neighborhoods. I'm thinking the Four Gospels, I'm talking about Court Street, there are places where people still have yards, people still want to plant trees and share the lemons with their I think we should encourage that. I think we can have garden spots in the city and still have urbanized areas, and, I don't know, a lot of these things should have been worked out in the good years, you know, it's the good years you want to put away for the lean years, and now, as I've told some of you, when you went to run, you get elected to the city council, when all you have to do, when basically you're going to be handling the, handling the what? The leftovers. But I think maybe in 10 years, the economy will pick up again, and we'll be able to leap forward. Perhaps the time is in, perhaps the time now is, is to consider about, consider stabilizing our small-time life and protecting it from development wolves. Not that all developers are wolves, but I think a good developer is a... Not that all developers are wolves, but I think a good developer is a developer who could take guidance from the city.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I think in the interest of giving Mr. Kozrowa body a hearing, I understand, is this the one Jarb that you're familiar with? Can you tell us? Okay. Patrick too. Yeah, Patrick. But going back to Mr. Kozrowa body, is this someone that you're familiar with?
Fred.
Can you just tell us?
Well, he's an engineer with Calcrane for many years and he retired from Calcrane and now he worked for Simon Wong, who was awarded contracts to lead a construction management team for a high-density building in Phase One. So, resident engineer at Calcrane, and he worked with Calcrane, he's a model of engineering and studies.
He's not here to defend himself, but my question is, and this is a question for you and for Conrad and maybe other people who've been on the council, on the planning commission. Do you think that that would be too many technicians on the planning commission because you've got an engineer and two architects? Would that imbalance the planning commission a bit?
You're asking for our opinion?
Yeah, what's your opinions? I'm just...
I would think that maybe technician or not technician, but a diversity of viewpoints and backgrounds is what we're looking for. People that look at it from a different perspective and bring something to the table is important at that level.
One of the things that I look for is not necessarily the background. I think everybody brings a certain element. That's a positive regardless of what their background is. If I recall correctly, he actually applied two years ago and he wasn't appointed, I think, or four years ago, I think Mrs. Palmieri was appointed in his place. The only other thing that I pick up on is how long they've lived here and how much they invest in the community and that to me is a very important role. And he, other than Mr. Embiid and Mr. Lubinski, have actually lived here the longest. So that's a thing that I take into consideration. Are we discussing people now or...
No, we've got one more applicant. Is Mr. Scalzitti here?
No.
No, okay. So we can look through, he works for Inland Empire Health Plan, he's a business analyst, has an MBA, educated at my alma mater, Andrews University, Marion Springs, Michigan, and Lo Melinda University. And you can see his application. I think what we'll do is maybe give ourselves a little bit of time to look through the materials and familiarize ourselves with all of the applicants and then...
I've had mine since Thursday. You're just looking at yours?
I know, but I want to look back over things having heard the...
Good answer.
Defense.
Please have a seat.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Yes.
When we do take an action...
It needs to be public.
It has to be public. Can't do secret ballots, but you can write your names and recommendations with your name or use those as tools to...
Yeah, what I'd like to do is use it as a tool to know because to me it's kind of awkward if there's someone who only has maybe one person supporting them, having them make a nomination and then others feeling either the obligation to go, you know, vote in favor of someone and not be a negative or, it'd be nice to know who has the bulk of the support so then we can make more of a public discussion about the few that have narrowed the field. So I think we can start by discussing before we even cast any votes, but do you guys have any comments in general? I'm impressed with the seriousness of the applicants. I believe there are several things that we try to achieve as a City Council and the Planning Commission. I strongly believe that it's rude of us as a city to have a planning commission that's heading off in this direction and then the City Council's heading in that direction. I think that much diversity is harmful to applicants because there's no sense of knowing where things are going. I'd like to see a planning commission that would form someone in a direction that the City Council in general would be in favor of so that you don't have to do some massive reversal at the City Council level. So that's one aspect of what I see as a planning commission. It really needs to be an extension of the City Council and not some gadfly variation on things. And I don't personally perceive that anybody that has applied tonight is heading in one of those directions, so I don't think that's much of a concern tonight. I do agree with Conrad that getting variety of inputs is very important. Getting, you know, an institutional perspective, getting a professional perspective from our current architects, I think that's helpful, and then getting a historical perspective, getting more of a community perspective, I think those are all good things. I would like to see us appoint people to this commission that give kind of a breadth there. So that's just my thoughts. You guys have any thoughts on it?
I mean, we can go through each one and I'll just, I'll give you my impressions on each one, just on my observations. Like I said, to me, a key is how long they've been in the community, that's critical. Another factor is have they served on other committees? That gives us an impression of there's a willingness to serve and there's a little bit of experience in that. I think that's important. And I'll just kind of go through each one. Mr. Embiid, I like the fact that he's lived here for 25 years. I like the fact that he's served on committees within the city, so he's familiar with the staff. Those are two very strong points. Mr. McKean, I like the fact that he's very articulate, well-educated. Anybody who's a physician, I always have great respect for and I think those are positive attributes. Mr. Fred Corserabi, even though he's not here, I'm looking at his information, the two things that stand out in my mind is the fact that he's engineer and he does the transportation. That to me is very important. Our city has some serious transportation issues, I think his input would be critical. I also like the fact that he had applied before, so there was definitely an interest and he wasn't appointed and he came back. He's familiar with some of our staff and I think that's a positive thing. Mr. Lubinski, huge history with the city, well-articulated, he's served on the planning commission, all very positive, historical commission, all very positive attributes. Patrick Scalzitti is very well-written. He's only been in the city for a year and a half, that's a little concerning to me, but he seems to have the right, I guess, criteria and background as well. So those are my general comments on all five applicants.
You've been on the planning commission, you've got more experience at it than any of us, so we're going to defer to your great wisdom right now.
Yeah, such as this. The, I think, your question earlier, I think there can be sometimes a tendency to bog down a little bit in minutia, which is good. I think it's good to have a person or two on there that's going to see those little things that, for instance, I didn't see or something and say, hey, maybe you should think about this. On the other hand, if that goes too far, then it's, you know, I feel sorry for them coming up here, you know? So I think there needs to be a balance on there. There needs to be some people that can pick that out. There needs to be some people who have maybe more life experience and all that, but I think there's something to be said for youth too. I mean, the city's made up of younger people too and so I think, and some non-technical people on there too, that kind of maybe can see a kind of a broader picture of what it would look like. So I would just echo, I mean, all of them are fine candidates. It's hard to choose, but I would say that if we can get a kind of a broader kind of makeup, that would be good.
Can you, for my purposes, there have been two physicians on this City Council consistently for the last six years now and going forward. There were two physicians on the planning commission. What do you think that a physician brings to the table that other people can't, if anything? It's a value...
Plus or a minus?
Well, that's a loaded question.
It's the answer, the same thing, plus or minus.
I'm surprised I should respond to that.
I think, I think there's a, I think, I think there's a tendency to kind of, part of what we do is you kind of assess a situation, kind of look it over, kind of come up to your decision, you make your diagnosis and then you move on. I think there's a, I think, it seems like that there's more kind of a like, you get a gestalt where you think this is good or not and you make your decision and move on. So I think...
Kind of a process...
It seems to me that it's a little more, and not get bogged down in all the details and it's either like, you know, either the patient has acute abdomen or they don't and you move on. It's kind of like that. Either this project looks okay and it not, and you move on. That's the kind of thing.
So it's more of a process approach than a perspective approach or, you know, what we're looking for is balance of perspectives and approaches, so...
Yeah. Yeah, there's various different ways to balance when you look at balance, what kind of different things you're doing. I just mentioned a few things that I thought might be good because I was trying to imagine a planning commission made up of five architects or five engineers or something like that.
Or five physicians.
Or five physicians. I mean, go to five internal medicine doctors and try to get a diagnosis, you never get out of there, you know? It might resolve itself before you come up to a solution.
Ninety-five percent of it gets better on its own.
Yeah, exactly.
So we've got an easy job, yeah. So what's your perspective?
This is like the judges who don't want to really show their cards, but yet they have to talk about it and the Supreme Court has to later come back with the verdict. Sorry, go ahead.
This is a Supreme Court issue? I actually really appreciate the applicants that came out tonight and sat here approaching 10 o'clock. That says a lot. All of these were very well-written and very extensive. I do kind of agree with Councilman Popescu. I like to see that somebody's been here a little while and that they're not just kind of floating through. I don't mean that in a negative way, I just, I think when you're from the area, you've been here a long time or at least a considerable amount of time, you have, you definitely have a buy-in. We often get accused of allowing the university to influence a lot of decisions here on the council. I think it's important to show that although they are an important part of the community, they don't direct the actions of the city. And so I think it's important to maintain a balance and I don't think that has anything to do with being a doctor or not, but I think that could include people that work for the university specific. I do appreciate the experience of the civil engineer, 28 years planning and developing and things like that, that says a lot, but I know we do have architects already on the commission, so of course I think a civil engineer kind of trumps an architect, isn't that correct, Jarb?
They're two different architects.
Okay, all right. That's not what all the civil engineers I know, they always say they're better than architects, so I'm just, I'll just put you on the spot.
It's kind of like an enthesiologist trumps internal medicine, right? Wow. Tonight, internal medicine has higher seniority on this council than, for the first time.
The other thing too is I also think it's important to represent all parts of the city and if there's a perception that one particular area, neighborhood, street is the ruling class, then I want to get away from those perceptions. And I do not think that's the case. I believe that we have probably the best council of any city that I know of and I go to a lot of, a lot of things and interact with a lot of other cities and go to conferences and I'm telling you what, you're even reading the paper, we're doing really good, but, you know, we have to be careful, we have to be mindful of that type of stuff, that we make decisions for other areas of the city we may not particularly live in and it's important to remember their, you know, those people and what their processes are, so, I don't know.
I just have a technical...
I guess that leaves me as Judge Roberts, to surprise everybody.
You don't want that role. If you go right, we'd be very happy. If you volunteer for that role, you're in trouble. Technical question, conflict of interest. We had, we've got issues, when university issues come up, the planning commission doesn't have the benefit of going to the rule of necessity. So if somebody comes on board that is employed by the university, how does that affect our current conflict?
Well...
Because two of the applicants are employed at the university.
Yes, and...
Does that mean any?
They're replacing Mr. Lenart, who was employed there, and Mrs. Uberzak, who had formerly been employed there, but most recently had indicated she no longer had a conflict. So, and Ms. Palmieri, refresh my recollection.
She doesn't have a conflict. It was her...
She was retired. She, yeah, she no longer had a source of income there, so it looks like we have a majority, but if, in the absence of one, we may not be able to act, which would mean we would have to continue an item until the non-conflicted member would be present. So it's always nice if you have more non-conflicted members so that if one is absent, you can still act.
So it's possible for us tonight to appoint two conflicted members, but if we did that, then the other three would have to show up for anything to go forward that the university deals with?
Correct.
Okay. So that's something to put in our caps to think about.
We've had occasional issues with that, but it's never really been a deal stopper for anything. We have two meetings a month, just like you do, and are able to work around that.
Okay, so have we discussed it enough? You guys want to make a list of your two proposed members and then we'll just pass them around? So what do you want us to do with these? Just put two people and then I'm going to pull them together and see how many, see if there's a, we're heading in a direction. And if there are certain people, then we'll narrow the vote and move forward to probably a formal motion at the end and discussion.
On all of them? Is that okay with the attorney?
Yes, the lawyer, the lawyer has the council member's name.
Oh, okay.
And it's moving to announce the name with...
Okay.
we would have to continue an item until the non-conflicted member would be present. So it's always nice if you have more non-conflicted members, so that if one is absent, you can still act.
So it's possible for us tonight to appoint two conflicted members, but if we did that, then the other three would have to show up for anything to go forward that the university deals with.
Correct.
Okay. So that's something to put in our caps to think about.
We've had occasional issues with that, but it's never really been a deal stopper for anything. We have two meetings a month, just like you do, and are able to work around that.
Okay, so have we discussed it enough? You guys want to make a list of your two proposed members, and then we'll just pass them around? So what do you want us to do with these? Just put two, two people, and then I'm going to pull them together and see how many, see if there's a, we're heading in a direction. And if there are certain people, then we'll narrow the vote and move forward to probably a formal motion at the end.
On all of them?
And discussion.
Is that okay with the attorney?
Yes, the lawyer, the lawyer's supposed to have the council member's name.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And it's moving to announce the name with each one.
Okay.
Too busy collecting the other ones.
That's the other thing about interns, they can't make up their mind for a long time.
Yeah, but we don't.
Too many.
We don't dangle you within an inch of your life for hours on end.
[inaudible]
When you're successful. But all of your failures occur in post-op, right? Never on the table, yeah. It's the surgeon's fault, yeah. Too much blood loss. Okay. Some of you are using first names, I don't know who that is. Looks to me like we've got, okay, Duper, Embier, Kozrobody, Daley, Embier, Katibi, Lenart, Katibi, Kozrobody, Rigsby, Lubinski, Embier, Ovi, Kozrobody, and Embier. We have four for Embier, three for Kozrobody, two for Katibi, one for Lubinski, and none for Skazidi. So what's your pleasure on that? We have, we have a clear majority for Embier, we have a bare majority for Kozrobody, and a close call for Katibi, and the other two seem to have fallen below the bar. So what's your pleasure? You want to?
We should move on to the one we have a consensus on.
Now that we know that, that, okay, I think that's a reasonable way to do it, one at a time. The highest vote getter is Embier.
I move, that we now may move to Embier to the planning commission?
Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then you're appointed. Congratulations. Now we go for the other. Now let's talk about balance, let's talk about conflict. Mr. Embier has a conflict with the university. Were we to select Kozro body, there would be no further conflict. Were we to select Mr. Katibi, we would have two conflicted members and three not. We can work around it, but that's just an issue.
But we can work around it.
We can work around it. It's permissible. If we had three conflicted members, it wouldn't work at all for any university issues, and every university issue would come to the city council for lack of a standing planning commission. So I think we can work around it, it's just an issue. We have the possibility of anybody voting for anybody at this point, there's no need to go with your original, because you're freed from that. As far as balance goes, Mr. Kozrobody would fall under the technical expertise category, of which we have two members already. Mr., or Dr. Katibi would bring the medical perspective that we have recently lost with the demotion of Dr. Lenart to the city council.
Well, I'd like to say that I'm, I was listening for a positive vision that included issues related to transportation, bike trails, walking trails, small community types of things, a sensitivity that we need to continue to work to attract businesses that fit the Loma Linda image that at least I've been advocating for some time, and beautification issues. And I have to say that I think Mr. or Dr. Katibi articulated those kinds of values to my satisfaction, so I would like to nominate him.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for the second?
I, I had a hard time, actually, you know, between Dr. Katibi and Mr. Koshrobody, or Body. What, and I'm actually pulling towards Mr. Kozrobody, and I'll tell you why, because he attached a pretty extensive resume with a lot of the projects that he has been involved in or been responsible for, and he has a lot of experience in traffic-related items. Thirty-six years, he says, in the industry, with 28 years just at Caltrans. I kind of like the idea, I, Mr. Katibi brought, I mean, he was very eloquent, brought up a lot of good points, talked about a lot of really great things, but I'm kind of leaning towards more diversity and an outsider from outside the university.
It's a disadvantage that he's not here to respond to questions or articulate a vision, and that is unfortunate.
It is.
I don't believe that it was required that they attend, that was an option, it might be an option.
I understand that, he should have, he should have been here. What I do take into account is that he has applied for it before, I think he does have an interest in it.
And I. I actually, me and Dr. Rigsby have interviewed him in the past. I know the three of you have not, but we have four years ago, yeah, but.
I'm just.
But that's a very good point. I agree with you, given the fact that we put everybody else to the wringer, it would have been nice to add him to the mix.
In the, in the interest of having balance on the planning commission, I like Mr. Kozrobody's approach, I like his expertise, but I think there's, there's a bit of an imbalance if we were to appoint him, because of the heavy technical expertise on the commission. I don't think that's necessarily disqualifying, but I would like to, you know, put him on with great confidence when one of the architects retires from the commission.
Yeah, I'm not certain that it.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I agree with actually Jarv on that issue. I actually don't have anything bad to say about Dr., I just call you Nakeen, or Katine, nothing specific. To me, I think traffic is a big issue, and the fact that he understands traffic, that to me is just, you know, the reason I got on the council because of traffic, and I think some of us are lucky that we don't get more flack for it. I think the tipican interchange is still very much behind schedule, even after we've been on it. So to me, getting someone who appreciates every time a development comes in and understands this is the amount of traffic this project is going to bring in, this is the road improvement you're going to need to make, I think the citizens were going to thank us a great deal. I think, to be honest with you, that's probably more important than the vision about bringing businesses, although that is important. To me, I think most residents are not concerned whether they could go eat at a restaurant here versus another city, they're going to be more concerned about the fact that they're trying to get out of town, and they're trying to decide, do I want to take Anderson or Mountain View? Recently, we've had a number of road projects that have really screwed up Mountain View. We're going to, as I was telling my kids, our city's going to be in construction for the next 10 years. We're going to have the tipican project coming up, we're going to have the university, the Constantino Plaxis complex coming up, where we're going to cut off one road, we're going to eventually have the medical center be redone, it's, our city's just going to be full of construction projects, and those are separate from the fact that we're going to be adding other businesses. We may have a potential VA coming in. So to me, traffic is an issue, but putting all that aside, the fact that he's lived here for 25 years, he understands what this committee is looking for, the fact that he has applied before, and we denied him that first time, that to me says a great deal about why we might want to seriously consider him putting in on this commission. I appreciate the physician's effort to participate in the process, but I'm not comfortable that I know enough about his background. When you ask him specifically what specific businesses you want to track, I thought his answer was a little bit evasive when I specifically asked him about what housing we should have. I don't think, like, I got a clear answer on that. So based on those answers, that's why I would support the civil engineer.
I'd actually agree with you on that point. I didn't think I actually got a very solid answer on the housing, I was looking for specifics. But, but again, I actually, I'm thinking more, I don't, I don't agree that architects and civil engineers are that closely linked. I, my, one of my best friends is a civil engineer, he builds bridges and roads, and most architects I know are more concerned with the structural integrity of a house or building, so, and clearly, this guy builds roads, because he's had his hand in quite a few of them. And there's a lot of impressive projects here that he's involved in. I was actually thinking about our Anderson Tipicanu interchange project, and I thought it'd be actually kind of neat to have somebody who's kind of on the inside at Caltrans, who kind of understands a lot of that stuff, anyway.
We've got an insider in Sand Bay.
Oh, that's true, right here.
But the project's still behind.
Right, and it was all my fault. A historical, maybe a historical moment. In the presidential election of 1860, the Republican Party had two.
Is this a socialist story?
No.
It's Lincoln, isn't it?
The Republican Party had two heavy favorites that couldn't draw more than about 40% of the vote apiece, and the Republican Party settled on someone whose name started with L. as a dark horse, the third party. So if you're having trouble deciding between the two Ks, I propose Mr. Lubinski as a Lincolnian He's even got the beard. So I know he lost in the first round, but I'm just saying, you know, if we can't decide if it goes two to two, maybe we can head in another direction. I was impressed with, I was impressed with his long.
I would entertain that for a second, but I don't want to confuse the process too much longer, then you end up having three nominations, and then we're going to have to really try to figure out who's going to be.
Yeah, I tried to get rid of that by having the first round, but I'm just saying, if we reach a stalemate on proposing.
May I ask a question, and I guess I would address this to you, as a former member, how many traffic issues come up to planning commission? The reports we get have to do with building projects.
Yeah, I would say, well, we, I don't know, whatever, we talked about some there, but I don't, I don't think there's that much.
So I'm trying to stretch on how this would be beneficial to us.
Can you, let me respond to that.
And particularly, I have to concede, I am bothered by the fact that he applies even, I don't care if it's two, three times, and he's not here to advocate for his own candidacy.
As far as, I agree with you, and there's no reason for us not to appoint someone based on the fact they're not here, especially when you're having a challenging time. I, one of the things that was critical, absolutely critical, and not only passing Measure V, was the way people had to allocate their traffic impacts and who was going to pay for them. Sometimes staff gives us good directions about where to go, sometimes having a certain person give certain input is critical. And I got to tell you, I have a brother who's a civil engineer, and sometimes I ask him questions about how they do it in Fontana, and it actually gives me great insight. Now, in regards to your question to Mr. Lenart about how many other projects had come to the planning commission in which traffic was an issue, and it's probably very few, if any, and the reality is that the economy is really, really bad, we're not going to have, we haven't had, but as we move forward, I think there's opportunities where traffic is going to be a bigger issue. So that's my concern, as moving forward, not necessarily what's happened in the past.
Actually, actually, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Lenart.
Oh, just to finish up the question, answer, I think we sometimes talk about different projects and widening roads with relation to that project, or maybe how the through fair going from one driveway to the other, or how many parking spaces, but at least since I've been there, I don't know that we've dealt with any big, major traffic-type issues.
And those are usually handled by a traffic study, right?
Oh, well, that's exactly my point. I think every major project we've actually had in front of us the last two years I've been on council has involved some type of traffic study.
But I'm going to point out, this is really critical here. When the last projects were approved, we demonstrated that, it was amazing, the University of Orchard Park, I remember talking to people, and one of the things the last council said, well, we're going to decrease traffic because people are going to move into town, and therefore they don't have to commute. But they don't take into account that each additional household increases traffic by fourfold. Unless you have an engineer who actually looks at traffic counts and is able to explain to you what causes them and understands that, no person, no layperson would understand that. That's why even a traffic study that's in front of a planning commission, having that extra expertise there, it's going to pay back huge dividends, not only about explaining how this traffic study was conducted, but more importantly, what are the improvements you will be making to the road to decrease the amount of traffic? And I think that's, to me, that's just a really, really important issue.
I guess the one, the one project that I'm actually thinking of is the Phantom McDonald's project, or, I'm sorry, the restaurant pad at Barton and Mountain View. And we did ask some, some traffic-related questions, but we didn't really get very good answers, and those were some of the reasons that I had an issue in voting on that particular project. The way I went is, is I don't feel we really looked into a lot of the various aspects of the project, and that's why I'm looking for more diversity into those areas, where you have experts that can talk about that. And I don't know, Dr. Lenart, you were there and voted on that project, so I mean, would any of that helped in making a determination?
I think there was a little bit of talk about the traffic flow and rearranging where they set on their base on where people were looking for traffic, but I would say some of the input of flow and sort of what can be taken from this area, others, you know, to write a lot, kind of point, and so I think, I think it's just the size of the coin, if you get everything in flow, but. But I do think that probably, right, we're supposed to be able to run the traffic.
And is a planning commission more like a jury or more like an expert panel? Because juries are people who listen to other experts and make community decisions.
It depends, like, who's asking the question.
But your opinion on it is, for me, if somebody comes in and they want to put an addition on their house, I don't care whether they want to put the wall inside as long as it's up to code, because I never see it. What I care more about is what do the neighbors think about what you're doing, and can they see what they're doing? Now, somebody else on the committee might have a different opinion on that, because he might want to go have lunch over there or something, I don't know. So that's why, that's why I was just saying earlier, I think it's good to have a diversity of opinion on there, because. of opinion on there because certain people pick up things that other people don't. And if you get different people from different walks of life on there, then they see, they tend to look at things at a different angle.
You guys are wearing me down, so maybe the mayor's suggestion is the way we can go.
And there's no way to persuade the mayor in a different direction?
It's a nomination, but we haven't closed the nomination.
Oh, do you want to do that? Now, I, I actually didn't second your nomination. I said I would entertain it, but I'm hoping that you would actually entertain ours before we entertain yours.
Well, what we can do is we can have another round of voting with paper. Because what I don't want is one of these, well, I nominated before you did, kind of a situation, because that, that turns into a round robin.
But I suspect, like, you're just avoiding being the deciding vote. You couldn't make that decision.
So it's two to two?
It is. I mean, me and Mr. Duper voted for Levy.
Is everybody pretty much ensconced in their current position?
Unless we can persuade Mr. Daley and Dr. Leonard to change your vote, or they can persuade us, but I'm not sure how else we're.
I understand.
Okay, so I guess everybody's pretty entrenched in their position.
And your motion was, Katibey.
You're just going to have to make the tough decision.
And have you nominated? Have you nominated?
No, Mr. Duper nominated Mr. Levy and Beere, and I seconded it.
Yeah, we already took care of that one.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm confused.
For the second, for the third position tonight?
Yeah, I, I, I.
So you are cause role body?
Yes. I, I like the traffic engineer perspective.
And you're?
Katibey.
Wow.
I'll say your nomination too.
Well, he did. He nominated Mr. Lubinski.
I did. I did. What if I just, what if I just abstained? Or I just vote for Lubinski and then we've got a tie and then we have another round?
But you can't vote for Lubinski because nobody seconded it.
Well, I'll just abstain. Everybody wants to go home at this point. Because I, see, I, I see problems with both and I see one is, is more of a conflict issue and that conflict happens to be a conflict that I share, so I don't fear it. You know, institutional conflict, it just makes it a little bit more difficult to get a quorum for any institutional issues and I think that's a problem. I think the other is a problem because I think there's, there's maybe too much technical expertise and not enough of that perspective that, that he's talking about, that kind of different walks of life, look at it, so.
Here's a suggestion. Why don't we go ahead and vote? You can vote or we can just say that and you abstain for both, therefore forcing us to then look at a third person. We're just talking about it, but do we want to go through the motions?
Yeah. Well, how about we just consider the possibility of a, of a public comment? Please come forward to the podium. There's a public comment.
I'm fine here.
But the, the people watching on TV.
They don't need to see you. You could enlarge planning commission by one. Enlarge planning commission by one.
That would give us six people. That would make it more challenging.
One, two, three votes.
Yeah.
That's fine.
If we did that, we have to actually do it by seven.
What percent of time did all five of us show up?
Come on, come on up. Help us break this tie.
Dick Wally again. A little perspective, after probably seven, eight years now watching planning commission. The thing that Mary Rosenbaum brought, that I didn't see many of anybody else bring in, was a woman's perspective. When you're talking about a kitchen, a man designs a kitchen architecturally, not usefulness. There's a triangle, you know, refrigerator and a sink and a stove.
But we have Paul Mary.
Well, but I haven't seen her bring that in yet. But in other words, she was thinking, you put the window in front of a cupboard, for what perspective? No, you put it in front of a sink where you do your work. Oh, and they made the corrections. I think like you're saying with the traffic, architects design buildings, but maybe only the traffic that goes between or into the buildings. They don't look at the bigger picture of what's coming in and around it because they haven't had that expertise in it. And I think where you guys are basically going, yes, you want a broad perspective of being able to cover all your bases with perspectives of saying, you're good in this, you're good in this, and you're good in this. Now, what's not covered between these two, they may think about it. Without traffic, and we may have a lot of traffic coming through town, that's not an architectural's problem. Whose problem is it? And I think like Duper's saying, hey, that's a traffic issue. Now, where's that perspective coming from? I don't think that would be on planning commission at this point, but I think, you know, like you say, cover all the bases because there are little problems that plan, or the apartments down here aren't popular. It came up. There's the plans in front of us. Where's the cupboards? We didn't put in the cupboards when they want a little more space. Well, this came out. And yeah, we could increase it, but again, you're looking not from the plan point of view, the usage point of view. This is why I would give you the suggestion of saying, try to cover a lot of diversified bases with knowledge.
Yeah, I think, I think we've got a polarized vote. And is anybody open to my third party suggestion?
I'm open to it, but I think we need to go through the actual voting, where you abstain just for the sense of fairness. And then therefore we cause a tie and therefore I have to bring up the third item.
Yeah, because I have issues with both of them. Why don't we just, why don't we just say it's a two to two tie with one abstention and go to the next phase?
Now, we're going to start discussing your candidate?
No, what do we do? Maybe, maybe there'll be a shift from one of the Ks to the other K or a third dark horse.
I have a record to say I'm vote. I'd be a word force.
I would want to say one other thing. I, I, I agree with almost everything everybody said and I really believe that living here a long time makes a, a deal is a, is a, is a good thing because I think it brings perspective and all that. But I, I agree with our other gentleman over here. I wonder if somebody doesn't, if somebody really wants it, wouldn't they be here? I don't know. And has he communicated with anybody as to why he's not here? Maybe he's out of town or something? I don't know. That, that's just one thing I would think of and wonder if somebody doesn't come to want to be, to the place where they actually want to be appointed, then what kind of dedication would there be to actually come to the meeting itself? That's, that's one of my things that I'm thinking about.
You make a very valid point, but I can tell you from experience on two or four other occasions, three other occasions where we've had applicants who never were even aware of when their actual applications were going to be addressed or when they should apply. And I know you can bring responsibility upon them or staff, but I mean, the same thing could be said about the other third gentleman. I think we probably would have given him a fair chance if he, if he had been here. Once again, not to rehash the whole thing again, to me, it was the experience of traffic, having been here and having applied before and actually had seen him before. So that to me gave me a perspective that I was comfortable with. I'd agree with you, especially in the light of the fact that we're all so conflicted. His presence here would have really helped address that issue, so I, you know, but just in fairness, I, I don't think it's always well communicated about what are responsibilities and what is it that we expect. I think, in fact, if, if the agenda says you may or may not be asked questions, so.
But it's a level playing field. It's still an indicator of motivation.
I'm not, once again, I'm, if it was somewhat I didn't know at all, yeah, I would, I would agree with you, but for me, from my perspective, the fact that I've had a little bit of interaction with him from the last time, I haven't talked to him since then, helped me understand. And not, not just that, just my background and how I got involved to begin with, it was all about traffic. Traffic is a big, big, huge thing for us. I think we're lucky people don't complain more and if people wanted to really rise up, they can. And I, I think we need to beef up everything we can to do in the city to improve traffic or make sure that it's done properly. And that's why it's, it's a big issue for me, I'm sorry.
I'll tell you just, everything you said is, is where I'm at as far as what I'm thinking, but I think I also put some emphasis on the fact that he has been a long resident here in the city and has lived at a couple of different locations here in the city. That and the diversity, it's not just the same old standard Loma Linda Fair anymore. You know, I mean, it's, he's, granted, he's a civil engineer, maybe that's actually unfortunate for him. I just, I think it's kind of interesting that he is on the outside with a different career, a different perspective. He doesn't even work in the area. It looks like he works in San Diego or that's where his office is at, so. I don't know why, but I'm.
On all of those issues, my candidate trumps.
Yeah, yes, your candidate does trump.
Sixty-four years.
I, I gotta tell you, unless I can get Mr. Daley and Ms. Leonard to change, I'm leaning towards, you know, seconding Mr. Lubinski, but it's not official yet. I, I want to get a, some sort of indication that there's no way Mr. Daley or Ms. Leonard.
I, I guess my, let me just, let me talk about that real quick. I'm, I'm very proud of Mr. Lubinski's record here with the city and his involvement with, with different organizations. I, I think, I still stand behind what, what I think. I'd like to see the, the engineer on, or the engineer on there, but I might go that direction too, if I had to.
It's, back to George's suggestion there, just curious, it seems to me, how often did we actually have all five people show up? It seemed to me many times we only had four people anyway, and I've been on these kind of committees before and we obsess about having an odd number of people and that, that the amount of times that the exact numbers show up is pretty rare. Is it something you could expand to six or could you have one be an alternate or something?
Put all three of them on, go back to another odd number.
Is that a question for us?
We've got enough microphones.
Is several people on there?
We can just put in one more microphone.
From a staff perspective, without the numbers off the top of my head, I mean, we're probably running with four, sometimes even three, about 50% of the time at planning commission. However, to have an even number on, you know, the restaurant issue down the road was thrown out earlier, something like that, that immediately throws that onto the council. So if we do have an even number that's tied, it goes directly to, to council then, so you're going to increase the amount of work you're going to get here.
Yeah, but if you had five and only four showed up, would we not take the vote? We'd still take the vote, right?
You'd still take the vote.
Unless the two, unless the two conflicted people were there and it's a university project.
One other.
And then the, the other side is, at some point, it does become unwieldy to have, you know, dealing with that many bodies and the city attorney needs to speak to how you, how you actually deal with expanding that because I don't think that's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, that's what I was going to bring up. That's an actual whole separate issue because the planning commission is not just any committee. This is actually one in which people have to file. It's part of the city code, there's so many members on there, we would have to change the city code. I'm not sure we could do that tonight, so that, that would be my concern if attempting to do that.
Do you agree with that?
Well, it's, it's not on the agenda to expand the numbers this evening. I, I think at one point, I could be wrong, Pam, I'm fading tonight, but I think the commission did have a higher membership at one point. It was reduced to five and in part because of the practicality of the more members you have, yes, you do get some diversity of opinions, but sometimes it becomes unwieldy to have too many people trying to express themselves.
And would we have to advertise the two additional positions or would, would that be an issue?
No, I don't think that would technically be required. You can appoint at any time, but some action by, to increase the membership would probably need to be agendized.
Sorry to drag it out, but I just think this is pretty important.
Well, I, I think it's clear that we're not going to change the minds in our direction. I'd be willing to second Mr. Lubinski in the planning commission. Yeah, then at that point, I would have to get one of you three votes to agree on it, so. I don't know if you guys are willing to compromise in your position at that point, but I'm, I guess I've already compromised, so. No, no disrespect to Mr. Lubinski. I think you'd actually do fine.
Well, I, it's, I'm not in the, I'm supporting who I believe is the best candidate for the reasons I've already articulated, so that's kind of where I'm at. And I'm interested in the best candidate for the job.
So we're two to two to one, so now you're the deciding vote.
Well, yeah. So you would not consider Mr. Lubinski at this point?
Say they're just watching this. State of mind.
Okay, so how about, how about we stall for a month and a half and expand to seven? Because that's the compromised position.
How about you expand for a month? How about you ever ask the, the two candidates that's not here?
I, I'm not, I'm not supporting the idea of expanding planning commission. I think we need to make a decision on one individual.
I agree. I, I think we should ask all the, all the candidates, including the last gentleman that we've significantly overlooked tonight, and ask them to come in and talk to us again and do like a forum.
I, I would agree with that. I think that would be a good compromise.
And let's give them their chance and, and really sell us on it.
I don't want to stretch this out too much.
No, one month is, I don't think is going to be too bad.
Are there any agendas coming up?
They have a council meeting for next month, right?
Well, no.
August 28th.
There's an August, I know for us, but what about planning commission?
Planning commission would be.
You've only got.
It'd be the first Wednesday of August. We have a meeting scheduled.
Oh, wow. Do you think there's any?
I just got an email. Maybe that was the 18th.
That was the 18th.
Is there anything on the agenda?
I'm not sure. There's not, there's nothing critical that I know of, but are you discussing expanding?
No, that's.
Good.
We have, we have this ability to maintain the, yes, please.
Yeah, you'd have four, so you would have a quorum.
Always, we need to make sure that all four applicants will leave it.
How do we, how do we know the other four applicants aren't just going to be disgusted with this whole process and us and say, I'm.
I, I do agree that just in the interest of fairness, have the other two applicants come and speak their case and then we can decide then.
Do we think it's going to change anything?
I think it can. I think once Mr. Fred shows up, I think Mr. Daley, Ms. Leonard might change their minds.
Hey, we got.
Or, or, I'm watching.
We've got a, we've got an appeal coming.
Can I appoint a personal privilege? Is that possible, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. You know, I think there has to be, there has to be something to be said about really having the enthusiasm and motivation to show up to the meeting and, you know, stay here for four or five hours to really, 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 really show your interest. And I think I've clearly demonstrated my interest and enthusiasm and I'm boasting with energy really about this position. And I know I won't fail you and I know you guys have concerns and I'd be more than happy to work eye to eye and very close with you both especially, to make sure those concerns that you guys might have with regards to my candidacy is addressed. But again, just to emphasize the, you know, if you're running for a position such as City Council, you will make sure you're at all those debates, all those TV appearances. You'll make sure you're at all the City Council meetings. Your attendance means a lot. So, thank you.
It's back on you, Coach.
I move that we continue the item until the 28th and have the other two applicants show up to interview. And we'll see where that goes.
Well, let me, let me just, before there's a second on that, let me just tell you what I think right now. I think there've been ample opportunities to convince some people to change their opinion. And looks like there's only regretful, possibly second-choice movement by one member of the council. So given that, I am going to throw my support to Mr. Kat, Dr. Katibbi. And we're going to declare it three-to-two and the election is over. I gave it a try. I don't want to drag it out much longer, so. Thank you all. Thank you for attending. Okay, the next is we need to find out who's going to be attending as the liaison to various committees. Done. Oh, yes. Traffic Advisory. We've got one applicant. Is that the...
Can I make a motion that we reappoint him?
Sounds good. Is there any opposition to that? Hearing none. We'll move forward to Trails Development. We have three expiring terms. Two of them expressed, expressed an interest and one declined, so we can advertise the position and appoint, reappoint the two.
Mr. Mayor?
We can use another tonight.
I think we'll also lose, yes, we'll also lose Mr. Imbier. Is he allowed to serve on two?
No, he's not. Not if he's on the Planning Commission.
So there's another loss there. So we can reduce the Trails Committee. It is very large. We have two empty slots. Is it okay to have only eight? Could make it whatever. Could only make it eight if we eliminated the two position. Yeah.
That's within the discretion of the council, of the numbers. It's, it's not a critical number. They don't have specific...
Do we reduce it to nine? We still have to entertain an application, correct?
No, we don't have to. If we reduce it by two, from 10 to eight.
Yeah, but we want to reduce it to nine, not to eight.
No, if we reduce to eight, we don't have to declare a vacancy.
No, I, I agree. But the recommendation of staff is reduce it to nine and declare it every...
Yeah, but that was before we elected Mr. Imbier to the Planning Commission and, and made another vacancy.
Well, they said to appoint two new members. We don't have two new members. We have existing members. So we still need to find one more person if we do go nine.
Sounds reasonable. And reappoint the one, the two willing... Okay. Okay, is there any opposition to that motion? Hearing none, that's approved. Now we go to our liaisons, the Audit Committee. Who's the current? There are two of us and I think that probably, I think that's kind of a mayor, mayor pro tem kind of a thing. So is it reasonable to continue with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
We won't vote on these individually. Let's just go through them. Budget Committee. Ovi and I, I'm willing to continue to serve on that. I think it's a...
I don't mind.
I think it's very good that the leadership of the council be involved with the budgeting process and interface.
Well, it's, it's just not that. The budget is actually very complex. It almost takes four years just to learn it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's kind of a consensus to continue with that.
Historical Commission, I'm listed. My attendance has been pathetic, so if anybody would like to... What was that?
You attended one.
Yeah, I attended one, okay. That's still pathetic, yeah.
I, I don't mind being on that commission.
Okay. So you'd like that one? Yeah, I don't, I, I really enjoy the, the Historical Commission and I'm a big historian of Loma Linda, but I don't know, maybe I just never got the notices. I don't know what was going on there, but... So Councilman Hopesky would like to attend, that's fine. Loma Linda Connected Communities, I'm on that. That is the, the internet? It's the fiber optic. It's a fiber optic thing. My interest in that is that I actually use the service. I have a subscription to that service, so. And I've been on that committee for six years, so I'll continue with that unless there's someone else who wants it. We need someone on Parks Recreation, because Stan was on that.
I don't mind being on that unless, if Leonard wants to be on that.
Okay, Ovi, Traffic Advisory. I've actually attended that more than the one I was assigned. Traffic Advisory is my thing with, I'm on a rampage to get rid of unnecessary red, red octagonal signs with an STOP written on them, so.
Were you responsible for moving the one in mine?
Yes, I was.
Do you realize after all these years, I still slow down and try to stop?
Yeah.
Every day. Yeah. Somebody was a stop there.
Yeah, 10 to 20% still stop there. I've, I've counted them, so yes. But do you appreciate its departure?
There's another one I want you to take out.
Good. Please let me know. I'm on a, I'm on a, I'm on a run here. Okay, so it looks like I'm going back on Traffic Advisory unless, unless Bill, you want to fight for it? Okay, Trails, you guys have worked out a deal? Duper's going to Trails. Doing a lot of switching. North Central Neighborhood, two of you, two of you have claimed membership on that.
I, I, you're talking about North Central now?
Yeah.
I want to give that up. I'd like to have Mr. Duper be on that, because he lives in that part.
Okay, then you get that one, so. Got that all, Pam? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to do all of those things?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Reports of Councilmen. This is our chance. Did, did we make any comments upon our election? I guess we skipped that entire thing. You want, you want to make some comments?
But everybody's asleep now. Who's going to listen?
Well, you want to hear yourself. You're a politician. Okay.
You had a speech?
No, I don't.
Oh, well, I'm glad that I didn't have to worry about an election. I, I, I'm hoping that my other two council members will have the same opportunity. I know Mr. Daley's dying to have an opponent because he's been telling everybody they should run. So hopefully that doesn't come true. But no, nevertheless, I, I am honored and thrilled to be able to continue to serve the community and I, I strive to work twice as hard the second term as I did the first.
In my former life as a pastor and now as an anesthesiologist, I'm acquainted with putting people to sleep, so I won't talk very long. It's just an honor to be on this council. I've thought about, I've lived here since 1980 and I've, it's always been a dream of mine to do this, so I'm happy to be here. But it's a bigger honor to sit in the chair that Dr. Brower was sitting in. I, I've known him since 94 or something like that. And he trained me in anesthesiology and he's been a mentor of mine. And we've kind of talked all the issues over the years. And I went at him with the red light cameras over and over again. And you're right, he's stubborn. He does not change his mind. But he, even today, he was telling me about how good they were, so.
Red light cameras.
Yes, uh-huh. So he, but anyway, he's a, he's a, he's a inspiration of mine and I'm sorry to see him there and I feel honored to sit in his chair.
Yeah, just for the record, I think he's sat in every chair at some point over 20 years. Yeah, yeah, I'll, for my, for my acceptance speech, I'll just reiterate that my, I have, I've set high goals for the community and low goals for myself. My goal is to, as I stated at my last inauguration, that my goal is to have slightly less than half of the community disagreeing with me at any one moment. So I hope to be representing the majority of the community and especially when they're And that's my comment. Any officers? Okay, then the City Council is adjourned and let's go quickly through the other ones unless there's some kind of a Planning Commission for housing authorities. Okay, we'll call to order the Housing Authority. Roll call will be dispensed. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to make any comments? Hearing none. We go to the Consent Calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none. We go to Chair and Member Reports. Hearing none. We go to Reports of Officers. Hearing none, we're adjourned. Now we go to the Successor Agency of the RDA, what used to be the RDA, now belongs to Jerry Brown. Thank you very much. We'll dispense with a roll call. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to make any comments about Jerry Brown? Or any other items not on the agenda? Hearing...
I just have...
That was you.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I do have a question, but...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, just, is there an update on our ROPs? I know that there were some that were denied, but then we, have we made any effort to try to resurrect them? What's the status on that?
We did submit a letter. Once the Successor Agency and the Oversight Board did adopt the, the city loans, we did submit a letter submitting the facts and the resolutions that were adopted. They have not responded back to us other than saying that they received the information and they were reviewing it, but that was it.
Okay. Are, are we making any effort to see if our situation is similar to other cities in regards to loans between the RDA and the city?
Not, not personally, where, I mean, we do have a consultant on board and then Mark Hipsch, our, our legal counsel will, you know, kind of keep abreast of other agencies that they hear about.
Because the only reason I ask is a lot of cities are entering into lawsuits against the state based on the interpretation of AB 26. And if there is something that was similar to ours, we may want to consider joining that because it is a significant amount of money that we would be losing if those ROPs were not addressed, so.
Let me add, worsen that now, because the SB 1484 that was just approved signed by the governor, so a week, last week or two weeks ago?
La, uh-huh, last week.
A week and a half ago. That is now, turned out that they will give us the number by yesterday that say, hey, you owe me two point, one point...
One point, almost 1.3 million.
$1.3 million. And then you have it to this Thursday to pay. If you don't pay, we're going to withhold your property tax and sale tax. No question asked. So that was approved and the governor signed it and we just received the, the number yesterday and by this Thursday we had to pay them.
So what was the original plan as to how we were going to pay that amount anyway?
Well, before we, we was going to, we have a chance to appeal. And now they eliminated that, but they said that, yes, we have to pay it first, but you appeal later.
I see, okay.
Now, they figured that they're going to be bankrupt and this is going to be Mexico before any of these cases actually get through the court system.
Yeah, it's kind of like Apple suing for patents and by the time they went in court, the, the model that they sued on is already outdated.
The staff are falling asleep. So I guess we won't get a Senate commendation when we retire. There won't be a Senate. Okay. Consent Calendar. What's your pleasure?
I'll second.
Okay, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We're adjourned. Thank you. Everybody go home, go to sleep.